All righty, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selecting Meeting, July 11th, 2016. I call this meeting to order, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we stand, I'd like you to remain standing for a moment of silence after the pledge.
(Inaudible)
This past week, we lost two firefighters. Captain Joseph Vernaco from Providence Fire Department. He is the husband of Erin Vernaco, who's Chair of the School Committee, BMR School Committee. And Saturday, we lost Tim Tilton. He's a firefighter in Millville, and he's also an EMT. I ask that we pray for the family, their families, and keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. On the agenda's approval of minutes, we're going to pass on that for the time being. And as long as the payroll warrants will do that, we'll talk about them at the end of the meeting. We have a rather not the agenda this evening. So we'll get started with the Police and Fire Department. There's a declaration of what we need to make on the surplusing of two vehicles and the replacement of a fire truck.
Who was it? The Chief?
Chief Landry. Where are you?
(Inaudible)
It's head. It's head. We'd like him to be full here.
We need him for the next portion as well, and that's a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while we're waiting, there is, we could, if you wanted to, under your privilege of moving an agenda item, we could take our two appointments at the moment, because I think they'll be fairly quick, and we can do that in when the Chief gets here.
That's a good suggestion. We'll do that.
Okay.
We have two appointments here, one for the Memorial Day Parade Committee and the other for Deputy Flag Warden. We have...
Mr. Kevin? Philip Clark, yes.
Phil Clark and Kevin Saret. Would you like to say anything, please?
No, you have to forgive me.
No problem. I'm Philip Clark, 107A Providence Street, Flag Warden. Recently, I was on vacation. I felt it most hardly then, as I haven't felt it in the past five years, that I needed a Deputy Flag Warden. For those times that I'm not around, and the flag needs to be maintained or lowered to half mast, as we seem to be doing on a weekly basis in our country. So with that, I ask the Town Administrator, if it would be possible, to create that position. And I would recommend Kevin Saret of 81 Pharaoh Street, Army Veteran, to fill that position.
You know, it's interesting, Phil, that the President, a couple of weeks ago, made a statement relative to flags nationally half staff, more than 40 days, 240 days a year. So I can see where you need some help. I would entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Saret as Deputy Flag Warden.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Saret as Deputy Flag Warden through June 31st, 30th.
2017.
30th of 2017.
One second, ma'am. Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
The Memorial Day Parade Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we received an email from Pamela Dean Kabetich, who everybody, I think, is well acquainted with, both her family, in particular her father, having been a World War II veteran. She's very active here in the community and is on our Centennial Committee, but has felt, because she wanted to offer her enthusiastic patriotism for this country and for our veterans to be part of the Memorial Day Parade. I think she's a really good person for that and will be very dedicated.
Motion to appoint Pamela Dean Kabetich?
Through June 30th, 2017. Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Great. I will send out a letter to inform them and make sure they come in for their swearing in. Thank you.
Moving back up the agenda, Police and Fire. Chief Landry.
Can you move that stuff over? It's supposed to stay for the public hearing.
Surplus of two vehicles.
The police vehicles and the fire?
Police vehicles.
Yeah, we have two police vehicles that are both, actually, one police, one fire, that need to go to surplus. They're of little, no value. Last time, we tried to sell one publicly, didn't go too well, so I'm going to suggest that we trade both vehicles in towards the purchase of one police car and the administrative police car. One of them doesn't run, needs a transmission, needs a bunch of work. The other one, Deputy Chief Ferno drives. It's full of body rot, excessive miles. It's an old police car. It still runs, but like I say, it has very little value to it. So rather than going through the cost of advertising these vehicles at a public auction, we're going to spend money to make very little money, I suggest we just trade them in. Realistically, they usually give us around $500 per vehicle, because they're of no value. One's an '07, one's an '08. The '07, they both have about 140,000 miles on them, running miles, and that doesn't count the hours.
Do you need a motion for...
I think under the bylaw, maybe with surplus equipment, it has to go through the Board of Select, I think, if I can just get rid of it.
Okay. Motion to declare those two vehicles surplus. Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to trade two in? Well, we're buying two separate vehicles. We're buying one administrative vehicle, that's from Imperial Chevrolet, and we're buying one from MHQ, so...
Wait, wait, wait. Do we already have the money allocated for both of them?
We do.
Yes.
We do.
And the capital thing.
We do. They were voted on last time, so I'm going to trade one to each dealership, and that will be the end of them. You know, years ago, they had some value to them. A lot of people would buy them, make taxicabs out of them, out of Crown Vics. Now the laws have changed in major cities, so they simply don't buy them anymore. So they really have no value. Everything's been stripped out of them to begin with, as a passenger vehicle, it's a police vehicle inside, so why waste money trying to auction something off that we're only going to get $500 back, so I can just trade them in and get the credit?
Do you take the white tower out?
I take everything off.
Do we ever try to sell any of that stuff?
We don't. We just had a sale, well, two months ago, on a website. We sold a lot of fire equipment and police equipment, so we'll be doing the same thing.
Because I remember you telling me that the new light towers, new cars do not fit the old light tower.
Right. And that's the problem. The equipment on the '08, the police car, none of that equipment you can transfer to the new models. The car's too old, the equipment's too old, and they don't make Crown Vics anymore, so it's really unique. Police equipment's unique to that vehicle, so it's of no value. I leave the cage in. I don't even take out the cage, because cages have no value, and I'm not going to spend the money taking the cage out.
Moving on, replacement of Engine One.
Sure. You know, a couple of months ago, we surplus the latter, which was roughly 35, 36 years old. The reason why it was surplus was not necessarily because we didn't need it, it was more because of the age of the vehicle, the safety of the vehicle, and the liability of the vehicle. A piece of equipment that old shouldn't be used as a frontline vehicle. Simply, you know, subjects us to litigation because of the age, should have collapsed. So it was surplus. So that left us with two engines, Engine One, Engine Two. Engine One was purchased in 2011, so it's a newer vehicle, but unfortunately, it's a smaller vehicle than Engine Two. Engine One, correct me if I go offstage here, Engine One only has 1,000 gallons, has a smaller pump, it's a single axle vehicle in the back. It's not a heavy-duty vehicle at all. It's underpowered, so the bottom line is it's a small engine in a big work environment. So having Engine Two, which supplies more water, a larger pump, there's really no need to have both of those engines at the same time. Very seldom have we ever used both of the engines at the same time. So the Command Staff on the Fire Department approached me a while ago and said, "Listen, Chief, we actually appreciate having a latter in town, and we think we should have a latter again." And I said, "Okay, well, how can we make that work?" And they said, "Well, can we look at a Quint?" Now, a Quint is a fire engine, pumper slash latter. It pumps water, it holds water, and it has a ladder on top, an aerial ladder of 75 feet. Now, it seems like a great idea, because you're getting two in one, you're getting two vehicles to replace one vehicle. And realistically, you know, years ago, when you purchased that 2011 engine, maybe at that time, the latter and the old engine should have gone, you should have gotten a new Quint. But we didn't do that, so, and that's okay. So what we have today is an underpowered engine. That's all I can say about it. When we have the opportunity to look at Quints. Now, for the last three or four months, the Command Staff, very diligently, they've been looking for used Quints. We cannot afford a new Quint, it's around a million dollars. Obviously, we don't have a million dollars. We did find a Quint, a 2,000 Quint, in the state of Illinois, small fire department. It has 40,000 miles on it, approximately 40,000 miles on it. We're working a deal with a broker now, where the vehicle is going to be totally refurbished from the ground up, warranted, new pump, new gaskets, new valves. The latter's going to be certified, new tires, new cab, new interior. Everything that's possibly wrong with that vehicle is going to be repaired and refurbished. The cost of that vehicle will be somewhere around $100 to $120,000. It all depends on how well I can broker the deal. In exchange, they're going to give us $140,000 for the engine. So not knowing what the truck actually needs at this point, all I know is we're not going to have to spend any money. We're going to get some type of rebate back, but that exact amount, I'm not sure of until we look at the new vehicle. The broker has agreed to fly Deputy Chief Ferno and myself to Illinois, with him as well, to totally evaluate the Quint. And anything that we see wrong, we're going to simply note it, photograph it, and require it to be fixed. On top of that, they've guaranteed us the pump, which is probably one of the most expensive things to be rebuilt. When it comes to mechanics of the truck, I'm pretty comfortable with that. It's a very good diesel, Detroit diesel engine. Historically, they go 300,000, 400,000 miles without an issue with any type of problem. Has an Allison transmission, which is probably the best in the industry. So I don't anticipate any mechanical issues with the truck. Most of the time, you spend money on the pump and the latter. So if we know that's all 100%, the vehicle, they'll paint it to our specifications, letter the vehicle to our specifications. As one Chief mentioned, Chief Sutton, I spoke to him about it, showed him all the information, the stats, the data. He said to me, quote, "It's a no-brainer not to switch vehicles." You know, the vehicle that we have, to be frank, it's a little vehicle. You can look at it compared to Engine Two, you can see there's a difference in vehicles, you can see why. John, you're familiar with fire engines. Engine One only has one single axle in the back. It's a very lightweight vehicle. It only serves that purpose of a smaller pump with less water. So at the end of the day, they cut it short. We can get a vehicle that, I'm pretty confident it's going to take us 15 years, up to 20 years into the future, in a replace a vehicle that, one, is very seldom used, which would be a benefit for the town. Now, we did, real quickly, we wrote a SWOT analysis. Steve did a very good job with that, with the firefighters. They put it together, it's the benefits, the pros and the cons. When you really take a look at that document and digest it, it's a win-win to buy this vehicle.
And that vehicle will fit in Station?
Oh, yeah. And then one of the things, when I told my guys, you know, "Go out and find me a Quint", I gave them the specific length of the vehicle, and they had to fit. So it's going to fit in Station One. So now we have a pretty good centralized fire department with the latter in it, with the pumper in it, and if everything goes well with our new grant, we should maybe have a new forest truck as well, and we'll be pretty up to date. Now, the only, you know, the setback is one setback, you're trading in a 2011 for a 2000. That really doesn't hold too much weight, as long as this vehicle is totally rebuilt from the bottom up, and that's what we're going to get. So we're scheduled to go to Illinois on their dime on the 21st of the month. We're going to leave at 6:00 in the morning and fly...
26.
26?
26.
21st to 26th? Okay. To the 20, on the 26th, with the salesman, the rep. Steve and I will be going, they're going to be paying the expenses, and we're going to do the evaluation. If everything adds up to the way it should, I don't think it's a bad decision.
It's not a capital...
So it has nothing to do with capital, has, there's no expenditures on part of the town, you'll be spending no money. If anything, there will be a difference in funding to the plus for the town. So at the end of the day, I really believe you're bringing a latter back into town, which, you know, is a debate whether we need it or not, but you always need it if you have a fire. So it's great to have the latter, we have a great engine, and it should set us forward for 20 years.
I'll entertain a motion to... Wait a second, I got a couple of questions.
I have some questions.
Ladies first.
So if I heard you correctly, I just want to make sure that I heard the information. Our current engine on trade-in would be 140?
Approximately 140.
Approximately. And this 2,000 Quint would be about approximately 100 to 120?
Correct.
And it has more specs?
I have the spec sheet for you.
Okay.
It has, when you look at the spec sheets, if you know about fire engines, it has just about everything you could possibly want, including foam. It's an all-purpose. Did you look at them?
Yeah, A and B.
Yeah, A and B foam on the latter. I had other, you know, by trade...
Those are the specs, John. What was that?
Was it in, I think?
I don't think so.
No.
No, I don't think...
No, I just wanted to show you that.
You know, by trade, I'm not an expert on fire engines, so I reached out to other experts to do an evaluation on this vehicle, and they all had the same conclusion. As long as you get it back refurbished, it's a great opportunity for the town to have their latter back. And like I said, for the next 15 to 20 years, we should have no issues with any piece of equipment in town, other than the ambulance.
So my next question was capital, but that's been answered. My other question would be, do they have a maintenance records?
They do. That's part of our trip. If we go there, I'm going to review all their maintenance, all their repairs. Fortunately for us, you know, I got a lot of mechanic background. I'm not a latter expert, not a pump expert. When it comes to automotive, I'm pretty good on that. So I'll be looking at all their records regarding the service to that vehicle, what's been repaired. And I really know what to look for. I'll be starting from the tires, going through the brakes, going through the chassis, any leaks. I'll look at it all, and then that'll be part of the plan. Everything that we find has to be repaired, and everything they find will be repaired. So don't get me wrong, you can buy a new vehicle tomorrow and buy a limit and have problems. I'm not saying this vehicle's never going to have a problem, but from what I understand, what they're going to do to the vehicle, it's going to be a great opportunity.
And we're expected to vote on this this evening?
I'll at least proceed with the question.
Here's the deal.
I just, I have a hard time sitting and, no offense to anybody, for 10 or 15 minutes and making a vote.
Well, here's my problem.
That's permanent and financial.
I'll be blunt. This recommendation and the research comes from professional firefighters, and they have certainly more knowledge than I have all this board does regarding fire equipment. So I'm not going to say I guess everybody when it comes to what this vehicle is and the possibilities this vehicle has. So to delay the vote could only mean one thing, that the vehicle's sold to someone else. And we've been looking for this vehicle for six months, and we've looked at others and we've lost them. So if we don't take any action, we may lose it, and if we lose it, we have to wait to find another one, and then the value of our truck diminishes. So I'm not looking to pressure anyone, but I'm just saying if we, you know, kick the can on this, you know, we may lose the opportunity for a decent vehicle. And like I said, you know, I go to the experts, because I'm not an expert on fire apparatus, so I went to the expert and got those valued opinions. So I don't know if there's anything more you would possibly find that I didn't learn.
The motion would be simply for...
I'm not going to make a ask of the motion.
The way I understand it, the motion would be just authority to proceed in pursuing this vehicle.
It would be, but it also, to conclude the deal, if we go to Illinois and this truck is everything that we expect it to be, we have to sign on the dotted line, otherwise it's not sold.
Oh, I think it all fan this, Ron, you need to come back to the board before you sign.
Well, I'm going to come back to the board with one, it's very simple. If I come back to the board, it's going to be with the offer, and it's going to come back with...
Oh, here's another thing I want to throw out. Another thing I want to say to you. You're going to a place with a valuation of one broker, and I deal with this all the time, with he's telling you what our fire pumper, I think you need more than just one...
No, I didn't include that in this presentation, because we'd be here for two hours.
If that was me, I'd have two, three brokers giving me a product.
This isn't the first rodeo. We've checked with multiple vendors.
Yeah, but you're not saying that.
Well, because I don't have much time this age, Ron. If you want to be here for two hours, we can go over the last six months.
I know, but I need to tell the audience that it's not just one broker.
We've gone through three different brokers trying to find this equipment.
Okay, you went to three brokers. What kind of money were they talking for the pumper? Hours?
All in the same ballpark, from 140 to 160. It was all in that ballpark. It all depends on what they sell you. It's like when you're trading your car, it's the same thing. They can't give you an honest trade till they see the car, and they can't give you the dollar amount till you figure out what you're buying, so that's where we're at.
So you're saying our pump is only worth about 140, 160?
Correct. Correct. Because when you really look at that pumper, it's a small pump.
I understand that.
It's a single act, it's a single wheel.
I understand that.
It's a thousand gallons of water. It's a small pump. So at the end of the day, so what I'm looking for is this, if I go to Illinois and this vehicle is everything that we expect it to be, and we broker a great deal, well, I have to be in a position to say, "We'll take it." I'm not, if I say to them, "Well, okay, you know what, now I got to go back to the board and let the board vote on it," I don't know how that works, to be frank with you. It's like having the, I have to have the authority to negotiate this deal in a proper way. If there's someone on this board that has more experience and expertise, they can come with us. I'll pay for the ticket. But you hate to lose an opportunity like this, because of bureaucracy, and you want to figure out, you know, if everything's right.
Yeah, but there's also warranties involved, with the engine warranties, the pump warranty. I mean, you got all this stuff. Well, you know what? As a board member, I want to know what's going on before I say sign on the dotted line.
You know, this is just, let me just say this. This is just an opportunity for this town to move forward in the fire service. If you want, if you're opposed to it, I get it, and that'll be the end of it. But, you know, I can't recreate and have every single answer for you before I go to Illinois and check out the truck.
You're not opposed to it, so let's clear the air with that.
But, John, what I'm trying to say is this.
I know what you're saying, Ron.
I can't go to Illinois and tell them, "Well, you know what, I'm sorry, I really can't make a decision now. I got to fly back to Mass, got to wait for the next meeting, and in two weeks, I'll have an answer for you."
Well, because you don't have all the answers that we'll look. I mean, you don't even know, you could go there and find a leak and say, "Well, we can get by that."
I won't do that.
I mean...
I won't do that, John. Ask me a question if I, what I don't have an answer for. Ask me one question.
Mr. Chairman, can I make...
Oh, no, there.
No, ask me a question, thinking I don't have, you just said I don't have all the answers.
You haven't seen it yet.
You're right.
Mr. Chairman, I understand what the board's concerns are, and I also understand how important it is for the Chief to try to have some negotiating power. If you're saying you're leaving on July 26th, our next board meeting would in fact be that following Monday. So if we can get you out there, and if you see what you really, really like, obviously, we would put that, it's not even a week later, because you'd be flying on on Tuesday, so that following Monday.
Yeah, I don't mind.
I wasn't thinking of that, because we have no meeting this month, other than this one, but I think that would work out pretty good in your timetable, and maybe we would be able to, you know, come with the offer, and you can tell them by, you know, Tuesday morning, you would have, you know...
Right. And I agree with that.
Still allow you to negotiate.
It's a true decision. The only, the only problem I have with that is maybe, I'm not going to be the happiest if the thing is sold in the meantime, to be frank.
Yeah, but how many days are you talking here?
But the vehicle's on the open market as we speak.
I understand that.
That could be sold tomorrow, and then we're not even going to go to Illinois.
Okay.
That's the other issue, too.
I understand that.
I mean, the only other thing you could do as a board would be to direct your chairman to work specifically with the Chief, that initially just to empower the Chief to go out on the 26th's plan, but if anything were to change, to direct your chairman to actually work with the Chief to come up with a resolution.
I don't have a problem with going out there. He needs to take a look.
I wouldn't strike a deal on this truck unless this truck is in new showroom condition, to be frank. If this truck is not in new showroom condition, we'd walk away from it.
Yeah, but the thing is, like I said, you need to go out there and take a look at it in good faith and see what's going on. I agree 100 percent.
What do I do, John, if someone says, "You know what, Chief, we've got this guy right here looking at it, too. Who's buying it?"
You don't have, presently, have an agreement?
No, I don't. And that's why, right now, we could lose the vehicle tomorrow. We tried to fly out earlier, unfortunately, we have to go on the 26th. It fits the salesman, it fits our schedule as well. So I just, you know, have a hard time understanding, if, you know, you got to, you got to have some type of confidence in the fire department and my, in my abilities to in the leadership to bring you back a product that's going to work. That's, if you think I'm going to go out there and come back with something that's not 100%, you're mistaken. That would never happen with me. Although I'm buying it for the town, you know, it's my legacy as well.
So at this point, it's a moot point if it's sold tomorrow?
That's exactly right.
Chief.
But it's not if we go out there. Now, they're invested, and they're going to spend $800 to get us out there.
Right. So Chief, my question is, if you were to go tomorrow to the broker and say you've met with the board, and they have agreed that, well, we're going to go out on the 26th, is that, what other than that becomes a formal agreement for you to say that you're interested without getting to the point where you're purchasing?
I don't necessarily have to sign a document. If I tell them it's a done deal, it's a done deal. The gentleman's agreement if it works.
They're looking for the done deal versus...
Can't sign any.
But I wouldn't sign anything.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean in terms of agreement that way. I meant in agreement to go out to actually see the equipment, so that's what I thought. Maybe that's what they're referring to as, that puts a hold on it until they go out to see it.
See, what you have...
Not to buy it, but to see it.
What you have to understand, too, the vehicle being sold is being brokered by more than one agency. There's other agencies brokering this vehicle, so the first broker to sell it wins the game. Our broker's working hard for us to buy it, but there's two other brokers doing the same thing. You know, we get the plane tickets for the 26th, we may never go if it sells before that. But the last thing I want to do is get on a plane on the 26th, get there, and it's everything I expect it to be, and say, "Ah, well, okay, thanks for the plane trip, I'll let you know in a week." It's kind of embarrassing in a sense, it's...
I have every confidence in the Fire Department, in your knowledge. And I'd hate to see the town miss out on an opportunity, because we know you've been looking for this type of vehicle for a while now.
We've been looking for a long time, and the other thing is, there are very few of these vehicles around. There's not many around with low mileage, low hours. It's simply, and I was criticized by people for selling the ladder. A thirty-four, thirty-six year old ladder, it's people in this town and on this board that thought they should've kept that ladder. Now, I'm trying to get a better ladder, a newer ladder, and.
Boy, the other ladder was falling apart. It was costing the town a fortune, Ron.
Well, it was, but there's some people wanting me to keep the ladder. Uh, John, I said the same thing. I shook my head saying, why would we keep that ladder?
Exactly.
But there's people in this town who want to keep that ladder, um, and I'm not, I, I just, you know, liability's the biggest thing for me. No, no five minute mind going on a thirty-six year old ladder. That's, that's the way it is.
Well, though you may have been working on this for six months, this is the first time it's been presented at this table, correct?
Right, but it wouldn't have changed the outcome of tonight. This presentation would've been the same. 'Cause I had no specs on this truck.
No, but the intent of what the department was moving towards and the process you were going through to find that, then tonight wouldn't be about not knowing the information, it would be about, we found what we were looking for all these months, and we're ready to go. That would've been the conversation, rather than the need, the necessity, the specs, the, all the rest of it. So I think from, it's, for me, it's, this is the first time I'm trying to process all of those pieces in, to make sure that the town ends up in a good spot and not cutting off my nose in spite of my face too. So it, you know, it's, it's a difficult position for us, at least for me, hearing the information, and then being asked just to go forward with somebody's plan that I'm just hearing for the first time.
I guess I'm just confused as to what the resentment is, because there's a need, the need has been shown, the equipment's been shown to be more beneficial to the town, everything adds up, so I'm trying to kind of dumbfounded.
It's not resentment, it's, it's.
What the issue would be.
Being informed of what our department is doing and how they're moving forward and what their changes are. What was the SWAT analysis? What did, why did they come to that decision? And then it wouldn't, like I said, it wouldn't be about any of that tonight, because we would've heard it three months ago. And we would've heard that you were looking for something, and it was going to, that would've been the conversation.
If this deal falls through, and I have to start all over again, and I find another truck in two months, we're gonna be back with the same type of questions you have about the vehicle itself.
Right, but, but it will just be about that specific, not about the whole plan.
So what part of the plan don't you like?
I don't know, I haven't had time to digest it. You know what I'm saying? You go home and you think of other things.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, um, the vice chairman's, uh, concerns are valid, and I think she'd be an excellent person to actually work with the chief and actually asking these kinds of questions, digesting it. We still have time between now and going to the twenty-sixth.
I don't have a problem.
And maybe directing Jen to be that point person, um, and then if all of those questions, and she can, you know.
I don't have a problem.
They need to go out there, period. They need to go out there and take a look at it.
That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with them going. I don't have a problem with you going.
No, you have no problem at all. I don't even know.
No, I understand that.
We have no problem whatsoever.
It's the authority to purchase.
That's correct.
Where I'm having.
That's my, that's my stumbling block, because, you know, you're gonna be able to consummate the deal. So here I am, I'm gonna go all the way to Illinois, figure everything out, the guy's gonna say, do you want it? And I'm gonna say, well, you know, I really can't make that determination, I can't make that decision, I have to go back and figure it out.
I don't have a problem, because we do have two weeks' time, I don't have a problem posting a meeting for the twenty-sixth with this one topic in the evening. Now, whether it's via a phone call with you, whether it's information, however we get that, teleconference in and get some information. I don't mind meeting on the twenty-sixth for the sole purpose of this.
What's the date of the week?
It's the Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
The plan is, we're leaving at five-thirty AM. We expect to have the evaluation completed by four, and I think the plane returns at.
Uh, like, I think it's ten-ten.
At ten o'clock, we'll be back. So I could certainly call you midday, go back with the times. Uh, the hour difference, I think there's only an hour, hour difference in time, so. I can, we could do a conference call, and I could tell you exactly what we found. And it may, you know what, I may get there and say the truck's not worth it, and, and we're not gonna work the deal. And they've flown us out there for nothing.
Is, is this board available on the twenty-sixth for a meeting?
It depends what time.
I have a centennial meeting, but I can always step out of my meeting. I'm here anyways from six-thirty to eight.
He's on a plane, he can't talk on a plane.
No, he doesn't leave till ten at night.
I don't leave till, yeah.
Ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, I could call you around six, or, or.
Yeah, so if you met at six or seven, we'd have plenty of time.
Well, it's an hour difference, right? So if I call you from seven there, it's six here.
Right. Yes.
So, if that, if, I'd appreciate, I don't mean, you know, to be argumentative about it, I just don't wanna waste my time, to be frank. I have more things to do than waste my time to go out there.
We don't wanna say yes until we're sure that you're comfortable.
No, I agree. I agree.
That's my point.
So that's my, my, I guess my point is, well.
You wanna go out there and have a free, I can't.
I guess my point is, we're going around in circles. If I'm fine with it at that time, I'm gonna be fine with that phone call. So what's gonna change if I'm, I, I don't, I'm just trying to.
Well, because it gives us two weeks to get all of our information.
Okay.
So that we're in the know, that we understand the process, that we've, it, it's giving us, it's really giving us the two weeks to look at this, to research it, to make sure it all works out, because, as I said, you've had six months to process this. We've had, you know, twenty minutes now.
Okay.
So that's, like, I don't say yes right away to anybody for anything, because there's always something that comes up later that you go, oh, crud, I didn't think of that. And that's the moment I don't want to happen.
If we can do that, that, that works too. I just hate to go there and not have the ability to say anything. It's kinda.
Not anything, it's not out of our pocket that you're going out there.
No, I don't have a problem.
It's not out of your pocket, nope.
Negotiating it.
So why don't we post a meeting for six o'clock on, uh.
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
So, okay, so I'll be calling who? Okay.
And then we'll put you through, we'll put you on speaker.
All right. And if anything changes from now till then, I'll certainly let you know if they sell it or.
My calls tomorrow, say, oh, that is that.
No, I may, I may. We, we reached out to, uh, we did reach out to another chief who worked in Chicago, who knows the, the town. And said it's a very small town, no heavy lifting, truck hasn't been overused, sound, you know.
Just a little bigger than this town.
Yeah, so it has, that's why it has low mileage.
Put all this money into this thing.
That's not our concern, it's, it's their concern. They're putting all the money into it.
But they might feel confident that it is well-kept, and there's probably going to be very little maintenance stuff.
You're not wrong, right.
It's probably what they're thinking.
The broker may cancel the deal. If they look at the truck and say, oh, timeout, it needs more than we ever thought, then we'd cancel detail, the deal, 'cause we're really not willing to pay more, nor can we. So that could, that could end it as well.
But you're also saying the broker's gonna take this vehicle?
Yes. The broker's actually coming with us.
Right.
To know, they rebuild these trucks and know what they have to put into it, and that's why I can't finalize the price.
Well, that's the other thing. That's where we come in. You gotta finalize the price, say, this is what he's gonna give us, this is what it costs, this is what we're getting back. I'd like to know that.
He said if the truck is in immaculate shape, it could only cost ninety thousand.
That's what I'm saying, and I think.
So if it costs ninety, they're gonna owe me fifty.
Well, I think it's only fair to the board.
At this point, so, just hearsay.
Right, right. So I think it's just fair to the board that we have the numbers before we give you the blessing.
Yes.
When it's only a phone call, we just go over the numbers.
Okay, that's good.
And I think, and I think that's fair.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's good. I'll just make the call, and hopefully the call comes.
Better earn my twenty-one cents an hour. I'll be here on the Tuesday.
No, it's just, I don't need to be frustrated. It's just a lot of work's going into this by the committee. They spent six months trying to identify this truck, and they've identified other trucks that we've lost, um, 'cause we, we just couldn't pull it together quick, like a day's notice. You had to know, like, we made the phone call at two o'clock, the truck was sold at three. On this particular case, the truck is still in use, so it hasn't been taken off active duty yet by the department to a soul. So that's why it's still there.
Thank you. We don't, we're on the agenda. We don't need to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
We got one more thing?
You do. Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's one more item that the, um, police chief is gonna address tonight, and that is, um, it had been brought to my attention, um, by a board member, another board, um, in department to look at this issue on Megan Way, which has to do with roadside parking. Chief, if you could elaborate a little bit for us, that would be good.
Lee Tong, did you receive a complaint about a boat placed on a trailer, parked on Megan's Way? The complaint was, it was obstructing the mailbox, making it difficult for people to turn on the street. So we did stop by, and we looked at the boat. I did personally, I looked at it today. And it's a large boat, it's parked in the cul-de-sac, it's not obstructing the mailboxes whatsoever. It's legally registered, the trailer's legally registered, although it's not attached to a vehicle by law, it doesn't have to be. So I found the trailer legally registered, I found the boat not obstructing any issues. I don't think it's a danger for public safety, police or fire, to be parked there. It's just probably more of a burden than I saw, probably, to other people living on that street, on Megan's Way. But from a public safety standpoint, in, in the statutes of law, I have no issue with the boat being there. It meets requirements of law, so that's my viewpoint on the boat being there. Now, it's owned by a, a Mr. Bright, uh, William. Uh, he's here today, he's in the audience. So I don't know if you wanna caution him as to why the boat's there, what his intention is, but from my perspective, I have no, no issue with the boat.
In the email, it stated that it's actually, the person who was complaining, it's actually on their property. Do we know?
No, it's, it's parked on the street. It's on the cul-de-sac.
It's on the tar.
Yeah, it's on the tar.
So that's, that's a common way.
It's on, it's, it's on the left-hand side, uh, we go straight down Megan's Way, it's, it's on the left-hand side, uh, maybe thirty feet before the neighbor's mailbox. And I drove my cruiser, uh, towards the left, I could easily place mail in the mailbox if I'm a carrier. So I didn't see it obstruct.
Those carriers would've told them if it was, in a way.
Exactly, and that's the other thing. I haven't received any complaints from the mail service, and usually I would have. So from my perspective, saying it, like I say it, um, I don't see any issue with it, nor do we have a bylaw that prevents it.
I, uh, right, I did do the homework and check the bylaws, and we, we have, we don't have a bylaw for that. The only, the only issue that I had is that there was discharge of water from, from the vessel to the street.
Right, and we, we spoke about that, obviously, um, he's here, you can ask him that question directly. I don't know if he's, if he's using it to wash the boat or run the engine, when you have to place water in the engine when you run them. So I, you can, I'm only guessing.
But it is a violation of the bylaw.
Right, so I mean, if you wanna speak to Mr. Bright, he's, he's in attendance.
The other question I had, do we move it in the winter time?
Yeah, it stays in the driveway in winter time.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, by, by bylaw, it would have to be removed once the snow season starts. So it's, you know, they, I guess the request is from a town resident to restrict parking on Megan's Way, with a no parking, timed parking, that's up the board, so I don't really wanna make that type of, um, decision. But once again, I, I don't see a need for it, other than the boat possibly being an eyesore to somebody. I mean, boats belong in the ocean, probably not so much on the street.
Well, I think too, I mean, the, it's a cul-de-sac, so they're not, not a lot of people are seeing it. But if I was to drive down Central Street or Fair Street, where there isn't parking on the street, and I saw a trailer with a boat on it day after day, I would question, why is this parked there? I understand a car.
Yep.
But a boat, I think, is a little different.
No, I agree, but by statute.
And I realize that maybe there's a fault within our bylaw in regards to parking on the street is for vehicles and not trailers, or, I, it's a hard, it's a hard.
It, it, you know, it's a hard decision, because.
But I just think if we had one parked on Central Street, whether it's allowed, we wouldn't allow that.
Well, not.
Are we allowing it because it's a cul-de-sac and it only affects a few people?
The difference that, the difference in that particular case was, would be, that boat's obstructing traffic. And it was blocking either two-thirds of a lane or part of the lane, you could say that's obstructing traffic, and you have to remove it. In this particular case, because of where it's parked, really not obstructing anything. That's the difference.
Can I ask you a question? Can you come up here?
Mr. Chairman.
I know, I know, but I'm just thinking if it was on a more public way, there would be more.
The boat's in your house, I wouldn't, I'd move it.
Megan Adders.
I, I, I wanted to ask you, is this something that's gonna be there for a long time? Is this a new place of parking? Is this something you're having a problem with your, putting it on your property?
Yes. I had my driveway paved last year, and the driveway, they used such a soft sandy mix that if I park my boat in the driveway, it'll rip the driveway apart. So I'm actually litigation with the company that paved my driveway. If I bring that boat up the driveway, it'll just literally destroy the driveway. On a seventy-degree day, my own pickup truck, when I turn around in my driveway, it just rips chunks out of the asphalt. When you cut the wheel on a trailer, that, on a boat that weighs six thousand pounds, it drives the tires into the asphalt and just will chew it right up.
All right, so what I'm asking was, so is this gonna be something that you're gonna eventually straighten out? Or is this gonna be something to be there for winter time?
Yeah, well, there's, there's two things. When the temperature goes below seventy, I can move the boat up and down. When the temperature goes abo- above seventy, the warmer it is, the more damage it'll do, because the asphalt is soft. And from what I heard from two other asphalt companies, it may take years for this to cure. I have to replace the top, so I have to rip my whole driveway out and have it redone. So that's my first issue. The second thing is, is I just unwrapped the boat. It's a hundred thousand dollar boat. It's a gorgeous boat, and it, I'm putting it in a slip in a couple of weeks. But, you know, if my neighbor would've come over and talked to me like a gentleman, we could've talked about that, but he'd rather just call the police.
Well, if you're gonna move it, I, I have no, I have no issues at all. I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be a plan to, you're putting it in a slip.
It's, it's not a violation.
Right, so I don't, I don't see what a problem.
Like I told, the biggest, as long as he stays away from the mailboxes, and he keeps it where it is now.
Yeah.
I, I don't see a problem with it at all.
And the discharging water is, I was prepping it for, I had to change the fuel, I had to, when you run the motor, you have to purge water into it, it's a raw wind water system, so water has to go into it. Fresh water from my own well with a garden hose, and it's butting my property. It's eighty feet away from my neighbor's property who's complaining. Eighty feet. It's not even in his line of sight when he looks out his window. It's in the cul-de-sac off to the left.
I'd be very honest with you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, wanna to make sure that you knew that there is another resident that actually, um, is here and may also, um, want to make sure they have an ability to address the board. And I think the bigger issue that was conveyed to my office was, is this a long-term, um, you know, issue? Is it going to be here into perpetuity? Uh, you know, is this just for this season? Uh, or is it something that's gonna be here for the next five or six years? So I think that's the commitment that the board is also.
It, it's such a big boat, it belongs in a slip. It's difficult to trailer 'cause of its size. And we're putting it in a slip in a couple of weeks, and, I mean, I haven't unwrapped the boat in three years, but it's still like brand new. So we decided to put the boat in a slip this year, uh, but I couldn't get the motor started. So I've been working on it, and finally I replaced the fuel pump, and it's running like a top. So we're gonna put it in a slip. We're going on vacation next week, and the following week, we're gonna put it in a slip.
So it's a short-term thing going forward, okay?
I actually have video too, of two things. One, I have a surveillance system that shows me turning around in my driveway and showing what happens when the temperature's over seventy. This happened in March, where my surveillance camera actually captured my truck ripping the driveway out. So you could see that it's, it's not made up, it's an actual issue. And the other video I have is of the boat in the cul-de-sac, if, if you guys wanna look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
It's not an eyesore by any means. It's, it's like a brand-new boat.
I'm not saying it is. I, I just don't have a problem with it.
You know, I've seen some stuff in people's front yards that are eyesores, and I gotta drive by it, and, you know what, I, I focus on my property.
Let's, let's move on.
So currently, there is no bylaw, which, so if this is something that we need to address in the future, we would have to do so at town meeting?
Right, might be something to do.
And you're saying that it's going to be moved, uh, the general law agreement, it's going.
My bigger concern is, this is the third person that's lived in this particular property since I've lived there. I've lived there for fifteen years, and this is the third resident that has been my neighbor. I'd hate to see him come in here and kind of rattle up the neighborhood and make it a no parking, and then move out in another couple of years. 'Cause it seems like that house flips every three or four years, for some reason.
That's a side point.
Yeah.
I mean, we, they're.
You know, we have cookouts.
We all, we all have neighborhoods, and we all have one person or two people, or sometimes I'm the person, and I think it's everyone else. So you know what? It's, I understand the dynamics of neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we can't get into that here.
Yeah.
Because that, it's just not, it's not proper.
The cul-de-sac just had this large yard sale. I wasn't involved, but the three neighbors, the other three neighbors, there's only four people on the street, had, if, if they make it a no parking, how are you gonna have a yard sale? How are you gonna have a cookout?
If Mr. Simmons has something to say.
It's distributed to all neighbors, including Fair Street members.
Yeah, we're not getting into that.
It's your personal choice whether or not.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're just doing the parking. Did you have anything you wanted to add in regards to the parking issue?
Um, I think I'm all set, as long as it will be removed, I'm happy to hear that, because the other thing is that I do wanna bring it up to everybody's attention when, um... Because the other thing is that I do want to bring it up to everybody's attention when, um, the truck is parked right in front of the boat, which hasn't been moved lately, but, um, it's a concern. We have little kids coming in and out, and it blocks the incoming traffic. So just wanted to bring it up to your attention.
It's parked to the left. And the boat, the truck is parked behind the boat.
Really, it, it blocks my view.
That's not true.
And we cannot come out of the driveway and see the incoming traffic, because your truck is in the way, it blocks my view.
That's not true.
And it's a concern for a little woman coming in and out. I know, I was there.
So do I.
Thank you for your con- your comments.
Do you think that we, um, I know Mr. Simmons is the one who, um.
This is what we've been looking at since two thousand and eleven, when we moved in.
Asked to, uh, have it placed on the agenda, so I just want to make sure that he has.
That's not true. That boat's, that boat's been parked in my driveway since two thousand and thirteen, and I just put it in the street last year, when I had the driveway paved. I had trees removed and the driveway repaved, and I put the, the boat in the trailer in the street while that work was being done. The trailer was not registered. He called the police instead of being a neighbor, and the police came and made me move the boat while my driveway was being repaved, and while I had a tree service there taking the trees down over the boat. I had to pay two hundred and seventy dollars to get the registers up to date, the registration, for a boat that I'm not even using, that's been parked in my driveway, to put it out in the street for two weeks while I'm waiting for my driveway to cure. So instead of being a neighbor, and we did speak about it, and he told me that, he'll give me the two weeks, but then he called the police the next day.
With all due respect, that's, that's beyond our authority at this point, and we need to move on.
Yeah, I agree.
We're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, CMR PC here to make a presentation to us on, uh, mitigation of hazard conditions. I'd like to invite Andrew and Trish.
Just stepped out momentarily, is there a, a fourth item that could swap in?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I can just follow up, um, with the conclusion of the last, um, item on the agenda. If it would be, um, if, if Mr. Bright would be so kind, when, when it, when you do finally get into the boat slip, it would be good if you could just communicate that to me, and I will communicate it to the board, because I think, you know, that's one of the conditions, I think, that they're moving on in this agenda item, and it would be helpful just for them to know that that happened. And that way, we can, you know, not do a follow-up later on to find out, um, you know. I know the chairman went out and looked today, and I'd rather not make him do that again. If we can have him just call us as a courtesy, that would be great.
Sure. Do you have a specific number, just call the town hall?
Sure, uh, yeah.
One-one-eight-six.
Yeah, five oh eight 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 three one one eight six. It's online.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else we can do at this point?
Okay, um, we've lost our, our next agenda item. Uh, we could do correspondence.
Correspondence, planning board.
Sure. Um, Mr. Chairman, in your packets, I put a actual, uh, memo that came from the planning department, in particular from our current town planner, uh, who, you know, had issued us a letter saying he was going to resign. And, uh, he just wanted to make sure that the board was informed that, um, that he was willing on a ad hoc basis, or when the board of selectmen or the planning board thought they might need assistance for some projects that might be extremely detailed, that he's worked on, um, to offer his services, um, as needed to the town. So I wanted you to know that, that he was extending that offer to the board of selectmen. We are, I'm going to give an update about the actual process of hiring the new town planner, but I wanted to share that with you. And I know that, uh, Mr. Chairman, you had also asked me to include, um, minutes from the planning board's recent, um, meetings so that you can understand why there are some large-scale projects that might require some institutional knowledge to be passed on to the new town planner.
Personally, I, I don't see a problem with, uh, consulting, uh, with Mr. Layden. Uh, we do have, uh, potential litigation in, in a number of areas, and, uh, his advice would be invaluable to the planning, uh, board. So I, personally, I would approve it, and I would, uh, entertain a motion or discussion on that subject. As needed to. Oh, for Joey, and, yeah.
Just the rate of pay, that, that, what he left at, and everything.
Yeah, as needed. Roll.
Aye.
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 And of course, Mr. Chairman, um, if it's something that the new town planner, you know, is completely capable of doing, this would not be a duplication, so it would be something I would run by you before we even entertain that, for what it might be, as needed. Um, the other two correspondents are very quick. Um, it, one is from Pierce Atwood, that has to do with the aggregation, electricity aggregation. Uh, and I've been sharing with you, whenever there have been changes, our public hearing testimony, you read the last, um, meeting, it has gone forward. Um, Colonial Power, of course, is negotiating on our behalf to become a community that has municipal, um, electric aggregation. And this was an actual document that they forwarded to us. There was a minor change that National Grid had put in, uh, and I've included that in your packet. And then only the other, uh, update I thought that was important is there has been a substantial, um, revision to the public records law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And our town council this coming fall will be having training sessions, and I think it will be important for anybody who has to comply with public records, including officials and our town boards. Um, I will keep you apprised as soon as that comes out. But they, they have not done a revision in years, and I think it will be.
Yeah, it's appropriate.
Substantial. And that concludes the correspondence.
I have one question. And this is being mailed out.
Yes.
Is this final?
Um, I don't think it's final yet, because the, what has happened is that they, actually, it's gone to the secretary. So, um, this was a copy of what it would've looked like, but I don't know if this is the final thing, because it hasn't been completely approved. Right, so it was entered into both testimony and as documentation to the secretary for, um, the Department of Energy.
My concern is, as a resident of Millville, you get this from the town of Millville, and it doesn't specifically even give you a place to get more information on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I know what this is for, and we know what it's for, because we've been dealing with it. But for the general public to get this, it doesn't give them a place to get more information. So even if it was a website, if it's, uh, our own website that might have information, I think, um.
This is one document that I think has to be submitted, um, but I don't think it's the only document. But it's a good question, I'll follow up and find out.
There should be some kind of information or a go-to place for more information, so they could, um, but each resident can decide based on their need.
And, and basically, uh.
And lessen the phone calls to the town hall about what it's about.
At any time, we enter into an aggregation agreement. You can opt out at any time, and you can go back to National Grid or wherever.
But I think it's important that every, because this was one of the things that, when they talked about it, I was surprised, that every Millville resident will be in it unless they opt out of it. Because what's going to happen is someone is going to get their bill and say, I never signed up for Colonial, and we say, oh, you had an opt-out, and you didn't opt out. And granted, they can opt out whenever they want, but I think we should at least include that information for them, because if not, you just go, oh, junk mail from the town hall, and you, and you don't think it's important, or you don't know how it's going to affect you, because there's no additional information. It's all, I think, it just needs to be there.
All right, I appreciate that. I'll convey that and see if there is more.
Mr. Davis?
Along my lines, Mr. Chairman, are we talking about a buying our energy from other than, uh, National Grid? What about the residents that already do that?
That purchase from National Grid?
No, that's for someone else, like myself, uh, like Marshall and I. We, we opted out of National Grid, we have another energy.
You, you, you can opt out to any supplier.
You would have to opt out when this mailing comes to your house, that you don't want to go with Colonial.
Because we're already with somebody else.
Right. But everybody in Millville will be signed up for it.
Miss, uh.
Who can sign me up? It's my bill. How can you obligate me in my home?
That's why it's at the state level.
Yeah.
Given the, it doesn't just come from this table, it's being presented at the state house.
Trish is in agony over there.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, uh, you, you have the floor to, uh, our invited guests. Uh, the last meeting, you had instructed me to invite them, um, as part of follow-up to a grant that the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has been working with, with the town of Millville on a natural hazardous, um, hazard mitigation plan. So I'd like to, um, invite Andrew Law and Trish Settles, uh, up here to do their presentation, and, uh, we thank you for your patience.
Thank you, thank you for the time on the agenda tonight. You sound like you have a lot on the plate, and we appreciate the, the time, um. Uh, I'm gonna, I get the easy part, I'm just going to introduce ourselves. For, for you guys, you probably know who we are, but for the members of the, of the audience, we're, my name is Trish Settles. I'm a program manager with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I'm joined by Andrew Law, and, uh, principal planner there. Uh, CMR PC is, uh, the Regional Planning Commission, one of thirteen for the, the state. We cover, uh, the city of Worcester and thirty-nine surrounding communities in southern Worcester County. Generally, typically, uh, our work is around transportation planning, but we also do quite a bit around community development and much more, um, and more, uh, as we go for, forward in disaster, uh, disaster planning and homeland security, and also regional services and municipal collaboration. What we're here to talk to you tonight about is to share, uh, kind of our progress report on, as, um, Jennifer talked about, uh, our hazard mitigation plan, natural hazard mitigation plan. We've been working with the town of Millville since probably two thousand and thirteen or so, uh, with a number of people, um, did everybody get this?
Uh, those, there's actually a stack right next to you. There's also a sign-in sheet that, uh, for folks who are still here, who haven't signed yet.
I have this?
I believe that was in their packets.
And a sign-on sheet, if you'd like. Mima gets kind of picky about these things. Um, the, the plan is, is, um, we've done this for twenty-seven of our communities, and then the remaining thirteen, we started this process in two thousand and thirteen or so, and it's required a meeting with a number of, 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 uh, each of the town's, uh, emergency management personnel. And since we've had a little bit of turnover in our staff, uh, actually neither Andrew or I met with your, uh, the personnel, uh, but we're here to follow up and continue writing the plan. I know that, uh, Chief Furno and, um, and folks were involved in a number of, of those discussions with some of our other staff. The, the plan is one of those things, and Andrew will get more into the detail of the, um, we're planners. We, we appreciate the value of planning, and we really encourage planning on a number of fronts, whether it's open space, um, housing, uh, and disaster, obviously, is one of those things we all want to see, you know, some thought put forward to, before the disaster happens, whether it's an ice storm, or hurricane flooding, or what have you. This funding was made available from FEMA through MIMA. I'm throwing out a bunch of afroangs, but I think most people know that it's the Emergency Management Agency for the, both the country and the state. They make the, those funds available for us to do some planning. For every dollar that's spent, and we, we, we recite this over and over again, for every dollar that's spent on planning, we save ourselves four dollars, um, when it comes to mitigating the disaster later. So we really feel it's very important to, and so this process has been really looking at, you know, all the types of disasters that happen. We, we don't deal with a whole lot of, of tsunamis, or, uh, zombie apocalypses, or any of those kinds. But we, we really do want to work with the town to think about these things, uh, both within the town and adjacent towns and throughout the region. So Andrew's going to talk about that a little bit. The plan is an essential part, uh, and much more for the board and for the community to know that if you have the plan in place, you're then eligible for funding to mitigate those disasters. Whether it's a culvert that's flooding and broken, um, the need for a generator in some instances, and it's, it's really a, a cost-benefit analysis. If it makes sense to, to, to replace something, and it's going to save you money on the other end, FEMA or MIMA will make the funds available. Uh, it's a competitive grant, but still, it's not like you have to really represent yourselves, or make this most glossy of presentations. It's really a cost-benefit analysis, and that's, um, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew, and he's going to tell you about, uh, what we've, uh, kind of the, the broader overview.
All right, thanks, Trish. So again, why we're here tonight is really twofold. One is to give you an update on the, the, uh, the progress of the plan, and the plan itself having value in the sense that it helps the town allocate resources going forward and protect, uh, your vulnerable infrastructure and residents. But as importantly, as, as Trish indicated, it's really about bringing some of that federal tax money back to town to help mitigate disasters before they happen, as well as to make you eligible for increased funding if a disaster should be declared federally. So, um, this is a good thing to have in your pocket when you go to, to get federal funding, whether it's for disaster mitigation, or even from other funding sources out there, this looks good, um, to have in your portfolio. So, um, it's going forward here, so just covered that slide. And, and again, this is a plan for mitigating damage from natural hazards before they happen. It's not a disaster response plan, it's not about terrorism. It has links to those topics and to other local plans, but this is a different kind of plan.
And we've worked with the town of Millville on evacuation planning and a number of other related topics as well.
So for folks who aren't, uh, familiar with this topic, again, what is mitigation? It's about what we can do now and in the future to reduce risks from these natural hazards. As Trish said, it really is a cost-effective way to go about approaching things. It's much cheaper to, to make an improvement now than it is to do so in an emergency situation following a disaster. So what we're hoping to do here is to break or at least minimize this cycle of building something, having a disaster come in, then having to rebuild, you know, and round and around it goes. So we're trying to slow that down at the very least. So mitigation activities can be, um, categories in, in several different ways. So this is, um, these are the categories that I'll go through briefly. So prevention of damages. So damage in many ways can, can be prevented through regulations. All three levels of government are involved. Uh, we're talking here about things like federal flood zones, to state wetlands law and state building code, uh, down to local zoning here in town. So any of these things can help you, um, build structures that are resilient to natural hazards, or to place structures and infrastructure in areas that aren't exposed to these hazards. Property protection, um, that, this is something that is often, um, done by the property owner themselves. So this is something that you may would do to your home. Maybe you can elevate your home if you're in or near a flood zone. You know, you can make your roof stronger to withstand storm winds. Uh, the town also has a role in this, uh, through, um, you know, infrastructure improvements, as do the federal and state governments. So that, this is something, again, we can do in many cases individually. Public education and awareness. This is not the most glamorous angle of hazard mitigation, but a lot of times, a little information can go a long way, and it can be one of the most cost-effective ways to approach hazard mitigation. So I know from, um, the previous meetings that the local planning team has had for this plan, that there's interested in, in trying to do some educational outreach on generator safety, wildfires, sump pump usage, again, trying to get the word out about the right way to approach things before the disaster happens. Natural resource protection, um, especially in a community like Millville, where you're a low-lying community along a fairly major river, it's important to try to protect your wetlands here, because they act as a natural sponge when you have a flooding event. So, um, you know, whether it be local land use regulations, or state or federal laws that help you protect those resources, that's also very important for hazard mitigation. So structural projects, these are probably what most people think about when you talk about hazard mitigation. Uh, anything from, you know, culverts, dams, drainage improvements, seawalls, if you're on the coast, that kind of a thing. Emergency services protection. So lastly, we want to make sure that our emergency services aren't impacted by hazards. So that means, you know, if you have a fire station that's in a flood zone, you may want to make some structural changes to, to make it resilient to that flooding. Um, if you're building a new one, you certainly wouldn't want to put it in a hazard zone. If you have shelters or evacuation routes, again, we try to minimi- minimize the effects of hazards on those facilities. The planning process, so where are we now? CMR PC has provided technical assistance to the town for development of the plan. The town has been contributing through the local hazard mitigation team. And I know Selectman Reposa has, has participated in at least one of the meetings of that team. Chief Landry and, uh, EMD Furno have also participated among others. So this is the first of two public meetings that we'll be having in front of this board. The next one, you'll see us as, uh, closer to the end of the year. But I'll get into a little more about the process, uh, approval process for the plan later. Um, after this meeting, this goes to MIMA for review, and then onto FEMA for final approval, before it comes back here. And again, I'll talk a little more about that later. And again, I'll talk a little more about that later. So, development of the plan, we've gone through six steps here, I just worked through most of them and then getting into the later steps. So, the, one of the first steps that we did was to identify critical facilities in town. So, this means things like fire and police stations, but it also means, you know, softer infrastructure like elderly housing, places of assembly, it, you know, right down to the smallest pump stations we have in town. So, this was generally a mapping exercise. And then the other side of that same coin was to go through and again, largely do a mapping exercise on the natural hazards themselves. So, here in Millville, flooding was the most pressing concern that we identified, but there are, there is exposure to, you know, things like wildfires, earthquakes, tornadoes, winter storms, obviously, and we did take a look at those as well. So, we even looked at some of the more obscure hazards that thankfully aren't very common. I'm thinking, you know, hurricanes and earthquakes, they don't happen very frequently, but when they do, the damage can be fairly extensive.
This is all limited to natural disasters?
Yes.
Things like derailments with ethanol and that kind of thing?
Yeah, it's not really intended to look at man-made disasters, but there is some convergence there. If you have a derailment that starts a forest fire, you know, there, there's some overlap there, it's not meant to, you know, stand completely alone as a plan.
And when we did that evacuation planning, a separate pot of money that we did countywide, we did look at, and that's looking at much more at what are those types of disasters? And we went through each community and asked, what would be a, a type of disaster, you know, whether it's a, and, you know, everything along the Mass Pike was, it could be a truck rollover on everything, when a railroad was a train derailment. Some of the communication towers were, were mentioned, so those kind of things came up more in that, as we thought about evacuating people either to, through, or, or from our various communities. And so, those, and a lot of that is dovetailed to this, you know, that mapping of infrastructure came up, provided to each of our communities.
Yeah, and that's, so, I, I know there's been some concern from the research that's been done previously about railroad infrastructure, in particular bridges, as well as pipelines. So, the plan does discuss where the hazard areas are that may impact those types of infrastructure. So, going a little more drilling down into the local level here, so one of the key pieces here was the local planning team, who helped us to identify a number of specific areas of concern here in town. I won't go through all of these in detail, but again, flooding is the predominant concern that people brought up in terms of having, you know, past incidents that recur sometimes in the same locations over and over. Some of the other hazards that were touched, touched on were a threat to utility lines from trees going down, wildfires especially near some of the newer developments, and I believe the fire department also has some concerns about one of the firefighting reservoirs, and whether or not there's enough capacity there at certain times of year to fight any wildfires that may break out. So, as part of our public education, or rather, a public input process, last fall, there was a survey placed on the town's website that got, not too many responses, about fifteen, but there were some useful comments in there, and the concern of the residents who responded to the survey back then were mostly focused on winter storms as well as heavy rain events. So, the town has made some progress to date on hazard mitigation, and in particular, I know there have been a number of drainage improvements along the Blackstone and the streets that, that are near the Blackstone River to help with some of the flooding issues, and I know there's been a tree trimming program, again, to try to protect some of the utility wires in town from storm damage. So, one of the reasons we're here tonight, now that we've finished gathering information, we've pulled together our preliminary list of mitigation strategies, is that we wanna identify any gaps. So, if members of the board, or members of the audience, or members of the community at home, you know, think that we aren't hitting anything here, or we're in the draft plan that we're developing, that will be available shortly, then we'd like to know. We also wanna make sure that we're confirming the priorities of the community. This is just a screenshot of some of the mitigation activities that we put together for the draft plan. So, plan approval and adoption, the, the draft plan, again, it's gonna be going to MIMA shortly, thereafter it'll go onto FEMA for their formal approval. We will be back here in November, perhaps December, for the board's vote to certify the plan. The plan is in effect for five years, so during that time, again, you have this increased access to federal funding for hazard mitigation and disaster response. We're asking for public input on the draft plan by July twenty-ninth. This assumes that we can get the, the draft plan posted on the website by the end of this week.
That was my question.
Which may, uh, if we're required to have a two-week window, so whenever we post the plan, we'll give at least two weeks for public comment, but we recently received some comments from MIMA on our draft plan template, and we wanna have a chance to incorporate all those before we put a plan out there for comment. So, if it's not July twenty-ninth, it'll be fairly soon.
And we do put that plan.
We'll put it on our website, but you can certainly link to it on your website.
Send over a link so that we can get it out there.
Yeah. Now, MIMA's been really helpful to us, working through the, the plan. Obviously, we've done the twenty-seven, and, and just ironically, we've just got funding to update the twenty-seven plan, so hopefully they're liking, they seem to be liking what we're doing. So, that's good news. But they're, they're great about working with us in terms of making sure that we know about opportunities for, you know, training, anything that's coming up, they're, they're very good about sharing information, and very good to work with us.
The focal point here is Deputy Chief Furno.
Okay, so, almost winding up here, the, what happens after the plan is, is approved? So, the, the town should establish a local implementation group, prepare a timeline for implementation, integrate the plan's recommendations with other local plans and policies, seek implementation funding, and again, that's kind of the whole point of the, this plan, is to, you know, make the funds available, but then, you know, it's, it's on the town with CMRPC cooperation going forward to try to go out and get those funds and manage the projects, and this is good for five years.
And once we have, you know, once everybody, you, you've adopted the plan, you have a set of strategies and mitigation, we'll work with you to kind of, as, you know, if a disaster declaration is made, to kind of help you work through what makes most sense.
Alright, and that's the, the presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions. Anyone have any?
Steve, you have any questions, or, you're all set?
It seems like it will, not all, but some of this will help with the, what's that plan? It has an acronym.
You're working on it.
Oh, the COOP plan.
COOP.
What is it?
COOP.
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 Some of this, I mean, we'll have other specific things, but the scenes like that will go, it will go hand in hand with.
What's the COOP plan?
Community Business Optimizator.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So, you know, for.
Got it, yep.
It seems like it's gonna be a piece of it, this will be a piece leading to it.
And we've reviewed, we've reviewed, you know, your open space plan, any kind of plan you guys have, we've looked at stuff that's been out there, and, Joe and you.
Unfortunately, when I fought, uh, did the survey, answered the survey, I was just thinking of where I came from, and asked, how many hurricanes have you lived through? A lot of them, starting in nineteen forty-four. So, it's not applicable to Millville.
I'm sure they'll take that into account.
That's definitely one of the hazards.
I don't remember that survey. I don't remember seeing it, I don't remember taking it, and it's probably something I should have known about. So, that's why with fifteen comments, I'm hoping that maybe to get the information out on the draft, so that you can get more.
Yeah, we'll send to the link.
I will absolutely get that out, and I think we'll spend, well, the comment period is only till the twenty-ninth, you said?
Well, two weeks.
Well, it'll be two weeks at least from whenever we.
Okay, good.
Do publish the plan, and again, it, it may slip a bit from there because of integrating the MIMA comments, but, you know, we hope to have it out roughly in time for that.
We'll share it with some other sites in town, so that, that it can at least electronically get out there, and then on our next meeting, we'll, especially if there's an overlap, I'll, I'll put another word out for that.
And you've got our email addresses if somebody has something, you know, you think about something that, that you missed, or it didn't show up there, you definitely let us know, or if you, there's even more detail that you wanna add to that.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and waiting for us.
I appreciate that.
I recognize what you're doing.
Sign-in sheet, we're doing a little.
I think it's.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
What you feeling?
Is this your food?
Yes.
I'll eat it.
Those are hot commodities.
I think it's hot.
We skipped over one, a public forum, anyone, Mr. Davis?
Those chairs don't get any more comfortable, do they?
Bless Davis, eight Quaker Street. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen and members of the town. My wife and I are here tonight to suggest to the Board of Selectmen that a committee be established to study the Blackstone-Millville Regional School Agreement for the purpose of determining the best interest of the town of Millville, Massachusetts, and its children. And I'm gonna turn it over to my wife, and she can go through the outline that we've, we've given you.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to, to give you a little background, how I came, how we came up with this. When the first word came that the school committee was looking at combining all of the elementary grades, K through two at one, three through five at another school, my husband and I became interested in it for several reasons. First of all, we really didn't know what the BMR Regional Agreement was, what it looked like, what it said. So, we attended several of the meetings prior to the information meetings, we asked questions. Of course, at the, at the first town meeting, I stood up on town floor and, and asked, asked some questions, and I, I've talked with, with a lot of other people, I've heard a lot of people's concerns. And one of the things in looking at the Regional Agreement, from what I understand, is that there's a window of opportunity that comes up every five years, where we can look at the Millville Elementary School, whether or not it's a good idea to keep it in the Regional, Regionalization Agreement, and I believe that window of opportunity is upon us now. I think it was from July first to December the thirty-first of this year, at what time, you know, we could research if we decided we wanted to remove the elementary school from the Regionalization Committee, or from the Regionalization Agreement, that we could do that. Several of my concerns are, right now, sixty percent of our town budget goes to the school for education. That's not gonna get any lower, I expect it's gonna continue to increase. And I just think that it would be nice to be proactive, I don't know if this combining of the elementary school is gonna come up again, but I think it would be nice for the town to be proactive rather than reactive, because, you know, we don't, you, sometimes you don't know what you've got until you check it out. So, we might find out that, you know, what we do now is great for the town of Millville and for the children, but we might also find that maybe there's a better, there's a better plan. So, what, what my husband and I, we thought was that, you know, now might be a good time if the Board of Selectmen agree that this is something that, that should happen, maybe they would consider appointing an ad hoc committee to just, to look at, determine, you know, what, what is, what, what are the numbers, you know, what is good about the agreement, maybe what's not so good about the agreement. Could we do K through five on our own, and then just be regionalized six through twelve? Could we maybe do something that looked like a K through eight at Millville, and then school choice for high school? Could we maybe do better with another town closer by? Maybe there's, maybe there's a better fit. I'm not trying to open up a Pandora's Box, because I know this is a really touchy situation, but I think that unless, you know, unless we look at what, what we have, you know, what the numbers would be, what it might look like, then, then we really, we really don't know. So, this is our suggestion, we suggested, you know, maybe the members could be one of the Board of Selectmen, with the town administrator, maybe a member of the Finance Committee, maybe a member of the Capital Planning, you know, Committee, maybe four to six residents who have an interest, and it, it would just be a, a committee that would be a short-lived committee during this window of, of time, to see if, if there maybe isn't a better plan out there.
I don't, I mean, do you know when the present agreement is due to expire?
Do, what, do you think I know that information off the top of my head? The, the elementary section of it is every five years. So, Mrs. Davis is correct, that I believe it's July first to January first, that Millville would have to give notice if they opt out of the elementary. That was put in place in eighty-two, I believe, I could be off, and at the time, people were skeptical about regionalizing the elementary, so what they did was they had a five-year evaluation of, is it working, is it beneficial, and so every five years, you could opt out if, if it wasn't working. So, this is two thousand seventeen is the year. Eighty-two, eighty-seven, ninety-two, ninety-seven.
That's the window.
That's the window, so we are in that window to give notice.
To give notice, yeah.
And the year is two thousand seventeen for that year.
Norman Thor, twenty-five Ironstone Street. I was on the original committee that regionalized the K through six committee. The lawyer at that time who handled the regionalization was Harold Gould. Now, I'm not familiar with the agreement, I don't remember it from that long ago.
I read it a lot recently.
How about your knowledge on that? We had an awful time getting this agreement through. The only, I think I'm the only living member right now from Millville that was on that committee. Fred Stone, Tom Devlin, from Blackstone, were the only two other members that, we had an awful fight because Blackstone wanted to represent a, an eight-member committee, but they wanted six and two. We refused to meet with them, until finally we sat down, and Tom Cullen brokered, who was the superintendent of schools at that time, brokered a deal where it became four and four. We sat down in February, we had to get this thing done by June thirtieth. We worked every single night from that point on, getting this thing done. The drafts, Harold Gould would go to his office, come. The drafts, uh, Harold Gould would go to his office, come back at night with drafts, we'd have to redo them and everything. So I agreed that an ad hoc committee would be great, but I think the first place you've gotta start is with an attorney, with the town's attorney, to look at this agreement and see what we can do. I myself no longer remember the agreement, because I had no reason to look at it. After we, I probably got it somewhere in my archives. But I think the place to start is number one, see if you, uh, you can form this committee and get your town council's opinion before you go spinning your wheels. Because you might just be spinning your wheels and can't do anything. So, while I agree, the premise is very good, you need more advice on forming this committee or appointing a committee than what you can do here tonight. Now, that's my only, uh, my suggestion. It's just my opinion. Now, obviously, it's up to you.
We've gotta look at the demographics going forward.
There's a lot of things you have to look forward. This, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we're not asking that this committee be appointed tonight or whatever. We're, we're just submitting a suggestion to you for consideration. You have the power to mill it over and do whether, what you, what you, what you, uh, think is, is, is right and proper. All we're saying is, in our, in our opinion, is that we think that the, that the Regional Agreement needs to be looked at. Are we getting the best deal out of here? Can things be changed or not changed in that agreement? Should they be changed? Should we stay with it? Or should we look at adjusting it? And if we can't adjust it, should we look at doing something else? Should we form our own school up here, uh, K through, uh, five or whatever you wanna do, you know, or K through eight or? And what would those, what would those costs be? Would it be less than what we're paying now? We don't know. But it's, the only way to, to find that out is to form this ad hoc committee and have them really dig into it. And I agree with, with, with Norman, that yes, Town Council has to be on board with it, and they have to review everything on it. But this is our, just our suggestion for you to think about and mill it over.
One, one thing I think that would help us town greatly is if we had more resident participation in the, the current process at the, with the school committee. And when they do their budgets and that kinda thing, if there were, we had, uh, Millville faces in there, we'd understand it a little bit better.
We have not suggested in this makeup of the committee that members of the school committee be members of this ad hoc committee. We don't think it should be. Their duty is to BMR.
Well, that's apparent.
We're looking at what is good for Millville and its children.
Yeah, well, I also think in any business, any agreement that had been in place as long as this has been in place and had not been
Tweaked.
tweaked or looked at, I mean, it wouldn't, and Millville is a business. I mean, I, whether or not we wanna realize that, I mean, the town needs to be run as a business and as such, um, you know, and that would just even give more clarification to the residents in Millville when we go on town floor. I mean, at the school, if they, they, they be, if they come back again and wanna, you know, do something with the, with the Millville Elementary, it would be good to have the clarification. And, um, so that's, that's my feeling.
I, I have to, I, eh, this is public forum, so we can't vote on anything this evening, but I think it's worthy to look at. I think one of the things through the Regional Agreement, um, proposed change that was done back in the spring, and I, um, I watched every school committee meeting diligently after Girl Scouts, every Thursday evening, or every other Thursday, um, attended the regional, um, meetings that they had put out in the walkthrough at Millville Elementary. So, I think one of the things was that I heard from most people, they were clamoring for more information. It was, what is the plan? What is the information? What are the numbers? I think the, the school committee in their thinking believe that they have done their due diligence and have provided that. Um, I'm not in agreement with that. I think if we can get real numbers and hard numbers and see what does it look like, like, maybe we're okay where we are. But maybe we're not. I don't know that answer, and I think until somebody works on that, um, I think it's worth looking into. I think it's worth asking the questions. And then we might say later, you know, we, we definitely need a change, or we don't need a change, but at least we have the information, rather than just a few people talking about it, that we have hard information, the DOE's information is out there, the numbers are out there. Um, I, 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 I think it's worth just, um, looking at what, what, what does it look like? Has any other communities done this? Kind of.
Mister, uh, Mister.
I hate to be this, um, the disagree on all of this. But I think you're leading yourselves into a, into a conclusion already by doing this. I think it takes you four at the Board of Selectmen to figure out and, and, and apply your leadership and approach the town of Blackstone to see if you can find some common ground here as to how we're gonna proceed into the future. If that can't be had, then you need to take the next step and talk about what, what the Davis are saying. But I think this step is far too premature right now. I think you really should, uh, reach out to Blackstone and figure out how you're gonna move forward with the school issue, given our disparity on populations and the like, and how it's gonna work. If you can't come to an agreement like, with that, then I think you gotta take some of these next steps. But first, please, I implore you to, you know, be the leaders that you are and work with the town.
I don't think, I don't think the problem, Rich, is with the town of Blackstone. I don't have any problem with the town of Blackstone.
Well, when I say the town of Blackstone.
I hear what they're saying. I, and it's, I get their reasoning. But I think our issue this year has been the process that we worked with the school committee.
Well, that, and I, and that's what I mean. I mean both, not just the, this, the, the town itself, the entire, the school committee, the town of Blackstone, and us. We're, it's a three-legged school here. And we've all gotta work together. And I don't think we've done a really good job. Uh, the Finance Committee, I don't, put my hand up on that as well.
We've done better in the past.
We can do better.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we ought to explore that before we start jumping to conclusions. Cause I had a knee-jerk reaction myself start talking to other towns about, uh, about, uh, where we wanna head. But in hindsight, you gotta take a look at it and say, wait a minute, we're leaders here. We've gotta see if we can make this work. If we can't, then we're gonna do other things.
Fix your house.
Yeah, yeah. I mean.
Yeah. Let, let me just add that when the agreement was completed and signed, we had a wrap-up meeting at the library and the high school, because this is where we conducted our meetings. At that meeting, Tom Devlin wanted to change it back to six and two. So this is what we were faced with. We took a vote and it stayed at four and four. But after that meeting, and we've gone through all of this, everybody had agreed on everything. At the wrap-up meeting, they wanted to change it back to six and two. So that's what you're dealing with.
Well, that's also many, many years ago. And as you said, many of them have passed and people have moved on.
Give you some pride.
My only, my only.
My only thing is, I like to know our numbers.
Yeah.
That, I, cause I felt like that was what I kept complaining about at the regional meetings. I don't know their numbers. They're saying it could be cost savings, the transportation, like, we couldn't get real facts.
I mean, maybe you just wanna look at K. I guess the thing that concerns me is there is the window of opportunity for K through five. And once that's gone, you have to wait another five years. The other thing that concerns me is that in the amendment that the school committee made, they eliminated this, this five-year um, recall every five years. They were gonna get rid of that, out of the agreement. And if that happens, then we're, we're, we're stuck. But I think at least if we're interested in protecting Millville Elementary, I don't, or if that's, if we're concerned about Milla- Millville Elementary remaining for Millville students, somebody needs to take a look at it, and they need to do it during the window of opportunity. Cause once that's gone, then it's gone. And if it gets changed because somebody doesn't see it, get slipped through and get changed, you know, then shame on us for not being proactive. That's my only concern. I understand, eh, we don't wanna open up a Pandora's Box, you know, things are already tenuous. Um, and, and I understand that, but at the same token, at the same point, I like to know what my options are. That's just the kinda person I am, so.
Point where we stand now, it's my understanding that that idea of combining on the elementary school is off for a couple more years.
Uh. Not the meeting I went to.
Oh, it's not?
They, nope, I, this is, they said that it is not on the table for November.
But that's, I mean, it's not gonna go back up again.
But that they wanted to explore it. Now, you have to remember that Blackstone's vote is good through next year, because the adoption went, you know what I'm saying, for, um, September of two thousand seventeen. The feeling I got, there was no official, they wouldn't officially vote to end it. They just said it was not on the table for November. I was sitting in the audience that night.
Yeah, they wanna be explored again.
So I have a, I, I would imagine that it would may meet our, you know, spring. It would be submitted again in the spring.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm not in total disagreement with Mr. Slow, but I am in disagreement with one thing. I understand that the Board of Selectmen, and they should, meet with the Board of Selectmen of Blackstone to see if things can be worked out. But if one runs a company, if I'm running a company and I have an agreement with another company, I may go to the other company and try to work out our differences, but it's not gonna stop me from having people within my company look at other alternatives to see if I'm getting the best deal or not, and what those costs are. So I think that both things can go on simultaneously. And yes, I agree with, with Richard that, Rich, that you need to talk with the, the Board of Selectmen, uh, of Blackstone and, and the school committee as the town. But I think that we also all look at our own interests as simultaneously, see what is, what might be best. Then you'd have the, you have the answers to all the questions. Maybe it comes back that, yes, you get a better deal than what our options are, are. Maybe it comes back that you don't.
Can we have this, please, on, on next agenda, so that we could discuss it? An open forum as an agenda item, so that if.
I would like that.
You know, and in that time, we can get some more information.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Twenty-sixth meeting. This would be for our next regular meeting, which would be in August.
August first.
Moving on. Thank you. We're at the, uh, Town Administrator's Report.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, before I go into the Town Administrator Report, I just wanted to make sure that publicly we knew that we had passed over one of the appointments earlier, uh, for the Council on Aging. We will have it presented at the next meeting. It was, uh, the letter was sent prematurely before the Council on Aging had voted. Uh, they're, they're going to, uh, for the person, but they didn't know that they had not, uh, done that yet. So, they have to do that before you do. So, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to do that for Marcia and I, though, um, when we have the next meeting. So as far as the Town Administrator, um, Report, I wanted to start with what has been, uh, quite on the minds of all of us, and in particular, myself, um, having come into this new position, and that is, um, the actual status of the Town Hall. And, um, as many of the public, uh, is aware, the Town Hall has had, um, a number of things, uh, that it has gone through from the very beginning and looking at the overall building and its future, uh, in terms of whether it should be renovated, um, or, or not, to, once, um, the, uh, more, closer inspection evaluation was done, there became questions about the actual, um, instructur- the structural integrity of the building. Uh, however, it's, we had never really gotten a clear answer, and I had found out even that through my own discussions more recently, right before the Fourth of July, um, weekend, in talking with our Deputy Chief, um, that there had been discussions about the fact that a structural engineer who had been here, uh, initially for the project, uh, in which there was a large report generated about whether we should renovate the building or, or not, um, it became one in which there was more concern by some of the employees that there had been some changes in the building and that warranted the engineer to come back. Um, however, um, we had not gotten a firm answer, even though the people who had attended uh, that inspection at that time, or evaluation, or reevaluation, including our Deputy Chief, um, had heard quite strongly that, that there seemed to have been substantial changes. Um, however, not having, um, someone who actually put that in writing puts us in a very awkward position. Us as leaders, myself as an administrator, and it puts our public safety people in a very, um, nebulous area in which we don't have a definitive answer. So, through the, um, support of the Chairman of the Board, along with our, uh, Police and Fire Chief, and along with, uh, one of our members, uh, from the Original Study Committee, uh, and, well, as some other people who I will tell you about, um, last week, we did an actual evaluation, uh, for the first time. We had a number of people who had not been here, and we had done a full site, now, evaluation. None of us are structural engineers, but we had, uh, people here for different reasons. Uh, we had people who had come, um, in the local, um, district, uh, on a regional basis. We had a District Seven Regional Technical Rescue Team that was looking just at the building, in the event that we ever were to have an incident here. Uh, and we had both, uh, Matt Belzito and I think it was Lieutenant Lambert, uh, who was here as well.
I believe so.
Okay. Uh, and we also had, um, our Building Commissioner, Larry Lynch, and we had our Regional uh, State Building Commissioner. Um, I had been, uh, sort of informed that early on in the stages that the state would not come in and do an evaluation. Um, we had Adele Reynolds, who was an enormous resource to us, and our Building Commissioner in, in doing an evaluation. It was my first time of actually seeing, uh, parts of this building that are under padlock, not to see. And, um, and for all of us, I think it was quite an eye-opener. Having said that, well, we are at a point now where we're awaiting, um, a letter from, uh, the State Building Commissioner and our Local Building Commissioner. It has had a lot of input from those people who care about, um, not only the safety of the building, uh, in general, in terms of being able to do public services, but more importantly, the safety of employees and the public. When we get that letter, I think it will be a letter in which it will provide us an action plan, an immediate action plan that we may have to address. Having said that, not having the letter at this moment in my hand, but expect it in very short order, uh, we have reached out to our insurance, um, provider. I've explained that we've gone through this recent evaluation. Uh, they're, uh, planning to come out, uh, and I expect that we may have a meeting within the next, uh, twenty-four to thirty-six hours with them. And, uh, and by that time, we'll have a better idea of, uh, what is happening. They're aware that we may, um, have some indications that this building, um, is going to need, um, more thorough evaluation by, um, another structural engineer. Uh, but, uh, what that, and, and, what that is going to, um, entail and how it's going to be done is something that, uh, we don't know until we get that report or that letter. And so we're expecting that. And so I'm just preparing the board and the community, depending on what that letter says. It may be something in which we have to take, uh, immediate action to at least, um, get down to, to a, a point where we actually know what is happening with this building. And right now, um, we may not have the luxury of, of waiting, uh, to have that happen, and, uh, we may be given specific instructions about how that's going to occur. And if that does occur, then we may not have as much, um, ability to, to negotiate the terms with that. Because this will be something that is done specific to the law in terms of, um, code enforcement. I know, Joe, our Chairman, has been, um, through that evaluation. If, uh, there are any questions, um, we do have some of the members of, of the audience who have been through that evaluation with us. Um, if there's anything specific you'd like, um, you know, obviously, I'm gonna share that information when it comes, and, uh, like I said, I expect it to be coming in short order.
Do we have a feasible study done? This is, uh, I mean, uh. Of this building? We spent twenty thousand dollars? Where is that report?
We have the report, but it was a report that was done not so much about the structural integrity of the building. It was, the whole point of that study was looking at the potential of renovating and going forward with the notion of that. Yes, so it was looking at overall space, needs, things like that.
I think we did additional work on the roof after that.
Wasn't he from the state, the inspector that came in when we called him? Was that from the state or was that just a? So that wasn't anybody that was certified for structural?
But he was not here for the reason at that time to designate whether the building was one in which it was safe or not. He was here at that time to look at the overall, I'm saying with regards to that study.
Well, it was because of the roof. They worried about snow load, cracking and this and that. Okay, just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, so.
Did you not see anything?
John, we did the study. You started out on that committee with us, uh, that feasibility study. We hired a company called Kleinfach to do the study. They did a study based on the proposal that they gave us, and I think they gave us more than what we, they put in their proposal when it was all said and done. In the meantime, we have the structural problem on the roof. It happened kind of about the same time. It just so happens that the structural engineer that our insurance company hired was the same firm that did the, the feasibility study. There's nothing wrong with that. I don't know what you're laughing for. There's nothing wrong with it. No, there's nothing wrong with that. Um, so anyway, he, he was familiar with the building. He came and looked at it. And we designed that post thing that was put in there. Later on, uh, some employees noticed that there was a crack appearing in the stairwell. That same engineer came back, looked at it again. And apparently he made some statements during that inspection that stated that it looks pretty bad. But then he went back to look at his notes, and this is, I'm getting this third story, third again. And it wasn't as bad as we thought. But we never saw anything writing from that, at that point. I think that's.
I think that's what I'm looking for. There's something in there. That's all I'm.
Now, I don't know if anything was sent from the engineer to our insurance company after that second visit because that's where the contractual relationship was at that point in time between the insurance company and the structural engineer. So I don't know if he reported back to our insurance company or not, because he didn't report back to us. And that, and that's where the concern is right now is because we never got a, a yes or no or, or an answer saying what the condition is after they saw that additional cracking up there. Which hence, to bring in the state inspector and well, and I, I agree with Jen did to do that, to kind of get a handle on this thing once and for all.
I always wanted maybe for the insurance company to find out, did they get it? Because we never.
She did. She, that's, you did get it.
No, I mean, I've, they're, they're, they're coming because we've told them we had this meeting. So they want to come in. I think what I would be doing, and I would be remiss, is if we didn't follow up on what they had been called for before, uh, and if they had supplied them with anything. But that was then. I, I, my big concern is if they've supplied them with something and the town actually never got that and doesn't have that. But even so, that's old compared to what we're faced with now in having other people look at this and some of the same people who had looked at it prior to in noticing that there may be, even though there has been some adjustments that were made initially, that it may not be actually doing.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that, Jennifer, I consider the way I look at it, that would be a baseline. At least they know where we started and where we're at now.
And I think what the town administrator is doing is creating this in full circle.
Right.
Everything out in the open here, so we have a clear picture of the condition of the stone and the wall and all. And so I think we're, we're doing the right thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm not disagreeing. I just want to make sure that, that she understands that there was certain things going. I don't know how much digging she did, okay?
No, she didn't do her day.
I, I, I can see that, but I was wondering, like you said, we never got the answer back.
Exactly.
Did you? At least it would be a baseline where we start and where, where are we now?
You know, the engineer that day came out, said some things, I guess, gave you, you some concerns when he was here the second time. And we never got an, an end, end to that. They never got a resolution, I guess, to that. So that's what, what the town administrator is trying to, is trying to do right now. And I think they're going down the right path.
Yep, I agree. We need to quantify it, um, but visibly, you can, you can see the profiles on the roof changing significantly from that first event.
Yeah, it happened to be the day of the centennial parade. I think I was, I was standing on the street and I was staring at the building. I was, uh, kind of aligned with the edge of the building. And you can actually see it falling out there from the street, so.
So this is just a heads up, uh, in, in terms of, you know, we, we need to get a structural engineer to look at the building again. Get a report, a definitive report, and then the, uh, building commissioners, uh, you know, they're gonna, uh, they're obligated to write a letter, is safe or not, uh, kind of.
We have to be prepared to take some actions.
Right.
Depending what's in that letter and what the structural engineer from the insurance company does is, I guess, so.
What's got more to be prepared.
Right. So, and, uh, and I, and I do think that, um, the department heads that were involved with, um, the walkthrough along with, um, the inspectors for the state, uh, we know and understand that those people are very literate on actual structural citations and understand whether this is a public building or not. They have an obligation to tell us what they initially see and what they think we need to do. So we're gonna get that direction and, and then from there, it will be one in which we need to get someone who will, you know, in addition to them, either confirm or make suggestions on what we do from there. But they're, they're definitely looking at the overall building and the people who work here and the public who comes to visit. So hopefully we'll have an answer, but I wanted to give you that as our first town administrator evaluation, um, agenda item. Second, uh, one that has also taken up a lot of time is the BMR Districtwide Meeting Update Agenda Item. As many of you know, um, in June on the twenty-seventh, we had a special town meeting because there was a request to actually increase the contribution from the town of Millville towards the regional school district. We went through that special town, uh, meeting in which it required a two-thirds, uh, vote, uh, which would have taken an additional sixty-three thousand, which is what the school district was looking for, um, and place it into the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget. Having the need for a two-thirds, uh, vote to take it from stabilization because our finance committee and your board had decided that was the best route to go, a two-thirds vote was required at that meeting and it failed at that meeting. As soon as that meeting was over, um, even though I was a new administrator here, I immediately reached out to our superintendent and asked if it at all possible before moving to the direction of calling for a Districtwide Meeting in which we would be addressing this issue to allow us to try to sit down and negotiate and have the board chairman along with, um, the finance board chairman along with maybe another member of our board here, uh, and somebody from the school district, um, board as well. And, uh, at that time, Mr. Himmelberger welcomed that opportunity. We had it, uh, pretty much forthwith. We had that meeting on, was it a Monday night? No, the twenty-seventh, was it Tuesday night? Yeah, so then we met, um, right away on Wednesday or Thursday, right before, um, I think it was Wednesday, the weekend. And, uh, what we discovered during the negotiations is that we did try to make a good faith effort. We had actually put back on the table that the community was potentially willing to look at negotiating a, a greater contribution and doing it potentially without going through stabilization, which meant we would go back to revisiting, making budget cuts within the budget so that we wouldn't need a two-thirds vote at town meeting. We could avert having to do that. But we would be willing, um, to try to have a regular town meeting and try to get that, um, solidified if, if the school committee would be so willing to take a lesser amount. And so there was a lesser amount that was put on the table. I think, uh, Mr. Laura and, um, Mr. Raposa, as well as, uh, Richard Gravello, uh, myself, I think we all went in there with the intention of trying to put the best deal forward that we could and trying to avert, uh, coming together, um, in a different point in time where we were doing not just one Districtwide Meeting, but then we would have to have another meeting to actually come up with the money again. At that time, the, uh, the offer was not accepted. And, uh, we employed for the superintendent to go back to the school, um, meeting, um, well, it wasn't not accepted at the meeting, but we asked the superintendent to go back to the school board and make the offer, and then it was not accepted. So I pardon my, um, getting ahead of myself. But it's been an eventful week. Uh, after that, uh, the school board was going to meet on that Thursday right before the Fourth of July weekend, and hopefully we were going to get, um, an answer. I thought, I was very hopeful that we'd get an answer that, that, um, higher amount was accepted, but not as of at the amount that they were looking for, and thus we wouldn't have a super town meeting. But that did not happen in that night around six-thirty in the evening after, uh, both you, uh, and the, uh, vice chairman had attended the school board meeting. You're well aware that there was a call for a Districtwide Meeting. Uh, there was quickly a warrant that was issued. It was sent over to the town. Um, I was doing my best, uh, in absence of the clerk and knowing that we had a short window in which to post. We all think we're trying to, to work with the school board at that time to make sure that the public was aware of that and that we were doing our side. Having said that, um, our constable was right there, um, you know, to, to make sure that the next morning it was being posted, even though the regional school agreement, uh, is quite specific about what the duties are for the school district. I think we all thought the school district had done its due diligence with its own attorneys in putting a warrant together, and so there was not a real close scrutiny of that. I think we were working in a spirit of cooperation and knew we had deadlines. And our town clerk knew that and was reading thoroughly through the, the regional agreement and was concerned and wanted to make sure that we posted it the same way that we always post our things in accordance with the law. It was not until after that had been, um, posted and that we were moving to advertise it and that we had already touched base with cable and we had put it on our website, that there was, and we also sent it to town council. And we were waiting for town council to look at the documents themselves. And so through some conversation that both, um, our constable, myself, and looking a little bit more closer examination, we started to notice that there was an issue in terms of it not being signed appropriately. It was signed by the district secretary of the school board, but it was not signed by the majority of the board that had voted for it. And the superintendent has since said that it's, is his fault. He accepts responsibility for having probably rushed it because it was the beginning of the holiday weekend and.
That's the manner in which they submit warrant items for our town meeting.
Yes.
But this is their warrant.
Right, right.
So they need, that's, I think, mass general law.
Well, they also thought by allowing the secretary to send the warrant and her signature, the secretary of the school board, that that was enough. And the law clearly states that they have to have, uh, under the hands, which is the actual signature of the board. And so that was not there. And so our legal counsel was quick to support, uh, that finding and indicate that it would be deemed an illegal meeting. And thus, you cannot hold an illegal meeting. And, um, and I, we sent the letter over through our town council to the superintendent and to the board to indicate that that meeting was not valid and it would be considered and deemed illegal. It would be easily challenged by anybody. So, um, then the school superintendent has been in touch with me, both by phone after receiving that letter and, um, today actually had stopped by. And, um, is hopefully requesting, um, that we may be able to come together again to negotiate. At this point, he thinks it's better not to go forward with a Districtwide Meeting. I agreed with him. I said we've always been of that stand, but, um, is hoping that we can get together. Maybe in the same, um, team that we did, uh, the initial attempt to negotiate and to do that as early as next Monday. So that is what I've been asked to, to put out to you, um, and whatever time on Monday works. I said that it would be maybe, you know, between the chairman of the two boards, um, myself, himself and, and, and if he, you know, so chooses one of his members.
Leave it to Mr. Gravello on the time.
Um, the later the better.
The later the better? Four o'clock in the afternoon?
The school committee is meeting this evening.
No, it was canceled.
Yeah, yeah. They, and that's, uh, Mr. Himmelberger did say that they don't have a regular meeting scheduled at this top point in time because the next meeting was going to be the nineteenth, which would have been the Districtwide Meeting, and then it would have been afterwards. You know, time obviously is of essence for him. He's operating because he does not have a defined budget with one-twelfth. And of course, during the summer months, the superintendent is looking to actually do the same things that we are after the beginning of the, first of the fiscal year, which is, um, setting all of your major program services in order. And, um, of course, he's not able to do that. And I recognize that's a, between a rock and a hard place to be, which puts us in a, I think, in a good position again to offer, like we have been doing, um, even before my time, trying to, to work with the superintendent. So I think it would be worth it to get together and see if we can negotiate that once again. If, if we do that and the board decides and the FinCom decides how they want to do that in terms of coming up with a number, it does not mean that we won't be going forward at a later date to do a meeting that will actually substantiate what has been authorized by this board in the FinCom. But it would be something at least, it would be being directed by this community towards the school district versus being something, you know, directed towards us.
I mean, if we go to a Districtwide Meeting, it's gonna be sixty-three thousand. I mean, if, if you think, at least what I project would, how a vote would go based on the communities and the populations, um, and having a, a control of it and, and that. But I am not a hundred percent sure. The, the superintendent may have all those intentions. But he is a committee of eight. And I'm unsure of their commitment to that. So I don't doubt that he is willing to work with us and wants to work with us, but in the end, it's the committee of eight that is going to say yes or no.
Sure. I think, um, one of the things that he will impress upon his committee, and I think one of the reasons he was here today, was, um, the understanding that we're talking about the need to post a meeting. Um, time is ticking and now we're talking about something that won't be occurring until sometime in, um, August, in which case, again, the whole notion of who will be attending, how that will happen, and it's right before the start of the school year, it's very difficult to operate with one-twelfth of your budget when most of the time you're looking to actually get your full amount and then working towards that. So I think, I think he can talk with his committee. That's one of his jobs, just like I'm talking to my committee and my board here. And it's up to him to be able to talk to them the same way he's talking to me, which I expect he will. I think, um, I think that the school board also has to understand that, you know, this board along with the FinCom is willing to sit down once again and, and try to come to a resolution that is not protracted in nature and does not do unnecessary harm to either community or expense to either community that neither community can really afford at this point. So, um, I, I would hope that we can meet on Monday. Monday, yes. Uh, he said later in the afternoon and I can offer.
Four o'clock, which, four-thirty, four-fifty?
Yeah, I can, I can email tomorrow, but that'd be, that'd be ideal for me if you were four o'clock.
Four o'clock, okay. He did say he would make himself available anytime during that day.
You gotta work, work this thing through. I mean, if, if they went back, like Jen was saying, we'd have to have another special town, they'd call for a special town meeting. Well, they would have that special town meeting, and then Millville would have to call another special town meeting to do this. Given the timelines, I think it would be almost into September about the time our meeting would be on that. In this case, if we can work something out, Millville would have to have a town meeting which would happen a lot sooner than, we can get this resolved a lot sooner than September, I think.
Well, even if you were to vote to make the appropriation, um, you know, and that commitment was made by, you know, either a line item transfer or something that we could do, um, then, then we can always have the meeting later to do the actual, you know, but it would have to be by votes, you know, it's, it's by vote of the boards. And that becomes the authority that allows the superintendent to go forward, knowing what the actual figure will be. And that makes that decision going forward.
Where does the fifteenth of this month fall, uh, the Friday, but, uh, how does that impact? Using this year's?
No, it wouldn't be this year. We can talk about the two thousand seventeen, so it's, it wouldn't affect us, the year-end transfer. The only thing that would is looking at our year-end transfer, our year-end numbers. And I'm hoping that those are as, as solid as what we would have wanted so that. And I'm hoping that those are as solid as what we would have wanted so that our two thousand seventeen numbers are as solid as they should be. So that's something that we're evaluating at this moment, um, this coming week.
And, and just to throw another thing on top of it, it's kinda crazy, but before you know it, we're gonna be into the next budget cycle.
Right.
We're gonna be doing this all over again. So we've gotta find a way to come to, come to agreement with, uh, with three legs of the stool here and make this thing work so we don't-
Early involvement.
Yeah, exactly.
But we're not trying.
No, I know, and I understand, I understand. Uh, but-
And I think the superintendent, uh, today expressed he definitely appreciated that coming together. He believes that it should have been done earlier, um, the entire budget process he's committing to do in a much more, um, advanced fashion. And, you know, I've already expressed to you about the, with intentions that I have going forward to begin with. So you know that part of it is going to change going forward. Um, so hopefully, we can avert this all together in the future, that we all have a defined number and we have a consensus on that. And we're not, in the middle of August, you know, trying to figure this out. All right, so I will go ahead and contact him and, uh, tell him for Monday, the following Monday at four p.m. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Rich, for-
He wants to do it sooner? I don't know if it's-
No, I, I think he's, he's at a superintendent's conference. So I asked if he needed it this week, even though we're gonna be doing year-end things. Um, I said, "That's our main priority," but, but I did offer that. So he, he came up with that, so I thought I would offer that. That's good. Um, the next item is, um, thank you, is the Central Mass Regional Planning, uh, Meeting Review. Um, the chairman and I, uh, put together a meeting with, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, um, mainly because, uh, I had come across some information in one of my previous updates to you, uh, about the fact that CMRPC can actually offer not only technical assistance for, uh, grant, uh, applications, but now are actually becoming more administrative in their capacity. And one of them I had talked about was a MassWorks strap grant that I had noticed, uh, along with a couple others that had to do with, uh, energy efficiency and, um, community development block granting. So I thought it was worthwhile to set up a meeting, and which we did. Um, the chairman, uh, was there at the meeting, uh, and it was a very, in our highway survey, Brian Malali was there as well. And, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning brought a whole team, including their executive director, to Millville. And we had an extensive meeting, uh, that was very fruitful, uh, and eye-opening, I think, for some of us. Uh, and I have included in here a memo of that meeting, but, uh, that outlined some of the things that we discussed. If you see that. Um, the first thing we talked about was the MassWorks, uh, potential for MassWorks grant, um, application. I told them that my intention was to apply, uh, regardless of whether they were gonna help us or not, but I was hoping that, that they would, um, step right in. And one of the things that they had explained is that, um, after talking about the very specific things that, uh, that Millville has for its roads' needs, they came, uh, Brian Malali had talked about one of the number-one priority areas, um, if we were to get some funding in the future, and that has to do with the central street, uh, road, uh, beyond the bridges here. And, uh, he went into quite detail about what that would entail, and as you can see in the memorandum, it goes into a lot of detail. Um, the memorandum is something in which CMRPC sent back to us to sort of reconfirm what we had spoken about that day and where they felt that they could help us going forward. So that area is pretty well-defined. Um, they do believe that we can, uh, with this upcoming budget cycle, which will be, uh, mid-August and it ends in September, uh, so that's why I say we have a quick turnaround and we can use their assistance. Uh, this will be to get an actual initial MassWorks application going, in which we'll get a comprehensive street upgrade design, um, definitions of waterline replacement and roadbed replacement and flood area mediation. That would be the first application that we would be looking for. I think I've explained to you guys that I find that the most, uh, successful grant applications are ones in which you do initial design work in advance and then you have that to offer, no matter what the grant program is. So I thought their suggestion that since we don't have any plans in place for doing that initial, uh, design work, uh, was really important and it would, uh, lend us to being able to tap into some funding. So we're gonna be working on that component. Um, as you can see, we talked about the town hall and not, that was prior to doing the full evaluation walkthrough that we did as a team. And, um, you know, there's some offers of, in fully investigating both the USDA and the Community Development Block Grant Program. They are now, um, actually can administer the Community Development Block Grants as well as help apply. So, um, we're looking at that as well. But the other piece, um, that was mentioned was, um, the grants that have to do with the Massachusetts Energy Technical Assistance Program. As you know, um, Trish and, and our chairman and, and our police department had worked, uh, quite diligently in the past for the first round of metagrams and had been successful in securing one. And they are now just going to, uh, open up round two for competitive grants. They can go up to, uh, two hundred thousand, and they are, are willing to actually help us not only put it together, but also to be an administrator. So we had actually gone into a memorandum of understanding with them, um, and they are going to work with us. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, doing, uh, solar, um, panels potentially on some of our roofs that have been recently redone, along with some of the other kinds of efficiency things, uh, boilers and things that we didn't get to. So our wish list is gonna be about creating some efficiency and return of savings, perhaps through, uh, municipal solar power, which I know has been very fruitful to other communities in terms of adding to their bottom line. Uh, we could use anything to add to our bottom line, uh, as well as looking at, um, the notion that we can have some capital needs perhaps met, um, again, at this time around. So, uh, that has, uh, I'm happy to say already that initial, um, application that they've asked to actually go in on with us has been accepted by the state. So we just got notification of that. So that's a good thing. We've started at least that partnership with them. And, um, the rest of it, we could take a read, but I wanted to let you know that that was a very fruitful meeting. The other thing that we heard from, um, CMRPC is they're doing a lot more in regionalization. We listened to it, both the chairman and I, about, um, the fact that they're looking to put together everything from regionalization of tax title, um, and foreclosed auctions. Um, they're doing t- other kinds of services for towns, local planning services. Um, whether that's better or not is something every town has to evaluate, but, um, everything that we have an opportunity to investigate, I will be doing with them. And if it helps us save money and it makes sense, then we'll take them up on their offers. But they have really expanded what they do. They really have. Um, so I think it was a fruitful meeting. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Chairman?
Only that, uh, on the first round on green energy, um, we'll be, um, meeting as a Green Community, uh, Committee on the twenty-eighth of the month to finish up the first, the last half of the, the existing grant.
Um, the next item on the agenda is about the status of the town planner. You asked me to make sure that, uh, at the last meeting to post the position. Um, I did, um, developed, uh, in concert with the planning board chairman, a nice, uh, position, uh, statement, job description, uh, and then, uh, through his efforts and myself and the planning board, uh, we, uh, had advertised it, uh, I think, pretty widely for planners. Uh, and I had also suggested we advertise, since we're close to the Rhode Island border for the first time, um, there is a planning association in Rhode Island in which we did also advertise there. And, um, I'm happy to report that, um, the closing date was the ninth, um, and in total, we have, um, eight applicants. A, a large number of them actually came from the posting in Rhode Island, which is quite interesting. Um, so, uh, the board is going to be, uh, meeting, uh, shortly about those candidates. And I know that the, the chairman, um, is eager to do that. So, um, if there's anything that you want, um, for them to be on the lookout, uh, for in their candidates, please let me know, um, and I will add that to the wish list, um, or the interview list that they have. And, um, and obviously, I've spoken with the chairman and I've talked with the current town planner about some of the qualities I was hoping that this person, um, who is gonna come in as a new person will have, uh, so that we can work in partnership as well, um, in some of the expectations that, um, even as a town administrator, I would be hoping to have, um, in terms of creative, uh, partnership with them. And then the last, uh, thing that I wanted to do, and you can see in your packet, is the state budget update. I only put this in because, um, it was just recently, um, adopted at the state level and right before the adoption, right before the Fourth of July, we had heard that the state figures were coming in, in terms of tax collection, far shorter than they had thought. So they hadn't even gotten to the point where they had adopted the budget and they were finding that they actually were about nine hundred and fifty million dollars short of where they thought their projections were going to be. Uh, how that was gonna play out for the towns and the schools, um, basically, uh, was a little bit concerning, but, um, the budget that was passed, um, by the House and Senate did keep with a forty-two million dollar increase to the unrestricted government aid, which was important, and also a hundred and sixteen million dollar increase to chapter seventy, uh, funds for schools, including a fifty-five, uh, dollar per student minimum, um, aid funding level, uh, for low-income students. There was a lot of things that were, um, also put on the wish list, particularly on the Senate side, that had to do with, um, education. And, um, you know, some of those things were, uh, held harmless, but there was one that, again, I'm just going to repeat, that, um, would have been important to the Regional School District here, and that had to do with the kindergarten grants. And before, they talked about lowering it because they were gonna add money on the backside to some of these other, um, line item accounts. How that plays out for our school district, I don't know at this moment, except for the fact that we were one of those schools that, um, regional schools that had actually gotten a, a kindergarten grant. And it wasn't just diminished in the final budget. It was that entire grant program of sixteen point two million was eliminated. So, you know, it will play to, you know, the importance of how that will affect our school district.
And I heard this morning that, uh, no sales tax holiday this year.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting. Wow, that's a first.
How much money, can I say it?
That's a first in, that's a first since two thousand and three.
Four.
Uh, I came in in two thousand and three, so I made two thousand and four. I thought it was earlier. All right, okay. Interesting, I didn't hear that. I've been kinda busy here. I haven't listened to the radio or the news. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you have all the, and table business next, um, if there's any, that I'm aware of, or not aware of.
I scratched it out.
Okay. So we have new business?
New business. Basically, that's, uh, inter-municipal accounting service agreement.
Right. Um, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and I have been, um, conversing with our, um, municipality to the north, um, Uxbridge, and, uh, in particular, the town administrator, David General. Um, this board, at one point in time, had entertained, uh, the possibility of doing an inter-municipal agreement with another community, with two other communities, including the one, um, being, um, Uxbridge and the other one being Mendon. At that time, um, I know the board was eager to try to do something for inter-municipal agreement for accounting services, but was not able to make the numbers work with the additional municipality, uh, that was also looking for payroll and some other things. So the overall cost of trying to save and get the benefit of, um, the services was not as, uh, as it is today. So I'm happy to talk to you a little bit about the fact that, um, there is an offer in terms of our accounting services, uh, being, uh, shared with the town of Uxbridge. And, um, in particular, uh, to do it at a rate that would be basically comparable to what we have now as in-house. Uh, but what we would be also gaining is, um, um, a, an improvement of our software systems and also, um, to have the intellectual, uh, shared intellectual, um, knowledge that will come from a municipality that is, um, not only, um, very, uh, well-regarded for its, uh, financial practices in terms of accounting, but also in the areas of, um, their treasure collector and assessment, um, their assessor's office. So my hope is this opens the door for, um, being able to share more than just the accounting services. But, um, when I looked at the pricing of it and I looked at, um, the very nominal amount that would be increasing, uh, for an agreement, um, it gives the community the benefit of, uh, an accountant with, um, uh, a better software system, which we all know is an, an improvement overall. But then to work in partnership with them to see other ways that we can actually, um, be improving our technology for our financial practices, and so we're gonna work together on that, um, in terms of finding out what the most appropriate licensing would be going forward. And, um, it allows the communities on both sides a thirty-day, uh, window that if we don't like something about this whole ordeal, that we can opt out of that. Um, but I have submitted this to town council. This was, um, something that came over, uh, from the town of Uxbridge. And tonight, because town council was late getting me, um, their rendition, um, I wanted to ask for the support of it, um, and if you're interested in, um, signing this, uh, once we have the final version from town council. So I would ask that, you know, sure, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
I'm just asking, because I remember you telling me this. Didn't you get a grant for new software for the accounting?
Right. This is why it makes sense to do it. We can do, well, we didn't, we can use that money for that. And that's one of the things that we're hoping to do. But one of the things that we need also is, um, I think the continuity of the actual accounting aspect, um, aside from the technology, we need two things. So, yes, we can use some of this. Um, I did forget to mention this because it's been a, a long meeting, and I apologize. Um, I have been in touch with the Division of Local Services, Pam Coker, from the, um, Community Compact. They are really excited if we do this agreement. And they're excited because, um, they are already working with us on two grants, the one for the IT and the one for improving our financial practices and our capital planning. They believe we could learn an awful lot, uh, from a community that, um, has brought in close to two million dollars in extra revenue for, um, going after tax-abating, uh, people and also, uh, properties that haven't been added to the bottom line. Um, they also have, um, a very good track record for, um, their accounting and their financial management practices in terms of capital planning. So I'm hoping to use all of that, um, and still be able to use the money that we have, um, coming to us from the grants in a way that makes it prudent, um, to being able to fund this and fund the technology upgrades. So we're really getting, trying to get, you know, um, you know, two birds with one stone kind of thing.
I don't see a problem looking into it.
Are you looking for a signature?
Well, I would be looking to authorize the signature on the final document. Um, so in principle, to say that you wanna do this and that you're willing to sign. And the reason why it's important now is it's the start of the fiscal year. So this is not about what's happened in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. We're gonna be looking with the, um, finance board and trying to close out this week, but we, you know, this is more about going forward. So the sooner we do it, and they're asking, you know, for this to really be fully put over onto their system, and they're, uh, they would be working to do that by August first. So that's why, then it starts the whole year. And it's already the year it started, but they were willing to do it. But if you wait too long, then it's a retroactive kind of thing and it becomes more difficult to do it.
So my question is, the, um, the software that we purchased, we still need here or we would not need it?
No, no, no. This is, we would be using their, uh, their software. They have data systems, so-
That IT grant would, how would that look?
It would, well, that, initially, the IT grant would actually not be as expensive. We wouldn't be using as much on this particular thing. Because, um, they're, that particular software, 'cause they already have the license, would be less for us to, to purchase. It, you know, I mean, I think maybe they might, uh, the ballpark was something like five thousand dollars, but-
Additionally used.
We also then can use the additional money that we have that we're saving in some other areas that we might be needing in other departments and, uh, for IT upgrades. So it wasn't specific to only financial management practice.
And to be clear, this would move all of our accounting out of town hall. Personnel, staff, we'd keep all our paperwork here and Uxbridge would be doing all of it.
Right. Our treasure and collector and the payroll thing would be connected to them in the sense that we'd get them to be able to speak to one another on the systems and that they're very open to that. But the actual counting, uh, and, you know, uh, the payment of our bills is, is the only piece that would be-
And this is reflective of what we're currently paying?
Yes. Yep. With only a two and a half percent increase from year to year, which is pretty, pretty nominal.
Did you fly us by the lawyers?
Uh, yes, yep. And they have, they've made a couple little changes to the actual agreement. Um, just so that you know, Uxbridge is meeting tonight to actually do the same thing, um, to look at this and to, to sign, to say that they're interested in doing it. And, um, it's not anything that you can't get out of, uh, if, even if you were to go in that direction, um, after thirty days.
Yeah, it's a thirty day.
Yeah. So I think, you know, it's got relatively little risk, uh, with the exception that, So I think, you know, it's got relatively little risk, with the exception that, you know, it's actually going in the direction that you wanted to initially at a, at a rate that's much more keeping.
What happens with the personnel here?
Yes. Well, the personnel would, would no longer be with us going forward if you were to vote for this. And I would have to work that out with that, that person.
How many people you're talking about?
At this point in time, it's, it's one person.
Okay, accounting.
No, no, no.
It affects the accounting department.
Accounting department. Collector treasurer is, is different.
We have 30 days. Is there a week out if you know?
Right. If there was a problem.
The other thing, the grant money could be applied to training of individuals.
Yes. That's what happened with Pam Coker. My discussions went from it just had to be IT to the, the actual grant now because we're doing an intermunicipal agreement, which is something that they are trying to get communities to do more of, that they would actually be willing to reframe what the actual goals are for that and the scope of the services that we get to provide. So that's why, you know, in some ways, it may actually benefit us to be able to use that to apply to other areas that we still need assistance with.
Okay, so that question that you said, I've heard the chief many times say, "I need to update my software in my police department. I need to update my software in the fire department." Can that money be shifted around and applied to help?
I, I would say that you got to leave it to me to work with the Division of Local Services on defining the scope, but I would say that depending on what it is, I don't know how much it is yet. We'll talk about that kind of thing. I would like to think about doing some of those things.
Departments having access directly to the system.
Right. To a budget and to the system. And being able to do things electronically instead of all paper.
Yeah, if I could just weigh in as a department head, two departments, it is extremely beneficial to go into this room and get the answers that I need. Now, I'll say, very good. For the last nine years, when we had a previous town accountant who wasn't in the building, oftentimes, it was difficult to obtain information that I readily needed. So it was a benefit to hire a town accountant, have him in this building, where if I needed an answer, whether it's the right answer or not, it's a different story, but to be able to speak to somebody on the spot and get the answer. My concern as a department head is reaching out to Uxbridge and getting this type of cooperation that, to be frank, is it going to be there or not? Are they going to have the time to entertain my business and the town's business when they're entertaining Uxbridge's own business? That's a concern to me. And to frank, as, as a, not speaking negative of, of Uxbridge, but I live in that town. And to be frank, I'm not.
Well, I think that'd be something that Jennifer would have to find out.
Yeah, well.
Find out where the open door.
Before you sign this document tonight, authorizing this, I just have my own questions as a department person, that are we giving up something that we slowly worked for when Marilyn, you know, decided to retire? We finally get something in place that is available to me when I need it. What guarantees are we going to have if we give up our ability to control that? Because you're giving up, what you're doing is letting our town accountant go and given this new, this new workload on the town of Uxbridge, are they going to be receptive to, to, to my department calling them and wanting an immediate answer? That's my only concern. It seems like we're going back to the way it was.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things that both the chairman and I have been doing already with the town of Uxbridge is actually working through those kinds of, kinds of questions that, like you were saying, that you may or may not get the, the answer that you're hoping to get or that you know is there. But there's definitely been a total opening of communication. There hasn't been any sign to me that, that we wouldn't have that. And one of the things I would want, Chief, obviously, is this is not something that we wouldn't get input from the department heads even in, in advance. You would have to know the process and have to know the systems that they were going to be able to do and how that would actually streamline and look and maybe actually make your life an awful lot easier to do that. And I'm not getting any indication at all that they're not going to answer questions, that they wouldn't be available to do that.
It's actually right in here. I know you don't have a copy of this.
It just seemed like we were on a fast track to go ahead and bless this tonight without, I don't know, did you have all, do I do diligence to get all those answers before you?
It is in here that the, the town accountant or designee from the other town would be available to the town administrator or department heads during regular hours via telephone and email. So you would have access during regular business hours.
That's the only thing, don't get me wrong, I'm not, in my opinion, I'm neither nay or for. I'm just saying have it on the town accountant, accountant in this building.
And that's business hours, five days a week.
Right. Right.
Yeah, not, not, not 40, four hours.
It was just a luxury that when I needed somebody, they're here. Now, you know, we, years ago, we had some issues with Uxbridge when we tried to deal with an issue, and that didn't go too well regarding regional dispatch.
I remember that quite well.
John, you were there for that part, too. That wasn't.
That was horrible.
You're exactly right. So I'm just reminiscing down, down the road here.
I think the other thing that I think we're hoping to, to gain also is being able to really address our report that the department, Division of Local Services has really cited this community in a number of ways for our financial management practices, including even though you have these silos where different departments are working, how that is not working to the benefit of the town in terms of it being able to address things that many other communities, including our counterparts to the north, don't have that issue. And it's because they've really streamlined these kinds of services and then taken, you know, a real initiative for being able to address the things that we're having trouble doing. So.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And I think there's some leadership there that, you know, is really an opportunity for us. And, and like you had explained earlier about doing the due diligence part and, and offering that, that's not something that the board hasn't entertained before. I think we've come down this pathway now and it's, we're recognizing that as even as February and now into the end of the year, we have some concerns about things that need to be done, even this week, that need to be done, that we're having, we're struggling with. And we can't struggle with, you know, state imposed deadlines and we can't struggle with finding out that we can't get certain information when we really need it. So at the department level, it may be working at, you know, interim, but for the overall financial aspects of this town, it hasn't been working and it's still not working. And my concern is you go into the fiscal year forward, just in accounting services, we could find ourselves in a really detrimental position with not being able to reconcile some of the things that we need to get done to address those things that are in the report.
That's my only position is that, you know, managing two departments and two budgets, sometimes I need the information forthwith.
Right.
And you don't get it.
Right. And part of that's because of an old antiquated system.
You know, exactly.
And, and part of it's also because of the type of leadership that might be there. Because there are other financial directors and accountants within municipalities that they look at, their mission is to make sure department heads get their information and they get their questions answered and you know and you can have confidence in those answers. And that's a completely different trajectory for financial management that I still think is we're missing here. And I, and I know the board, in the Finance Board, there's been quite a bit of frustration this year in particular and planning.
I'm at a point now where I actually monitor every one of my line items to make sure those numbers are accurate. And that's kind of archaic when I have to balance my budget line item per line item to make sure all that money's there. That's kind of foolish.
And we're still doing it in a paper pushing fast.
In this day and age, I should be able to go into the program and see exactly what I have, know what I've spent. And we don't have that.
Right. And what we're looking at is maybe also being able to do that within the two municipalities, even if we start with their system to begin with and then actually get the upgrades that we might all be really happy with. And then maybe use some of what you're talking about.
That's my question, yeah, that's all.
So, so point here is now, is the backup of the system. We're not hosting the database here with a backup. Depending on another location. I think that'd be my only concern.
Well, you're going to have to have a backup for their hardware, you're going to have to have it.
Yeah. I mean, in.
I would think if Lisa has access on her server, then it would be backed up. You know, she, she, she would be entering their server. So I think that's an IT, but if she, if it's put on our.
They said that they will go through every step of the way with the in-house servicing so that none of us are going to be left with, what are we doing with this system? They know we don't know VADA. We, they, we, we know that they don't, they know what system we're on currently, but they've been able to even look at our system and, you know, and our budgets the way they are and they understand all of that right now. But they would be coming here and making sure that the chief's questions, my questions, were all, you know, correctly on the same page and that we'd have a smooth transition. I mean, that's part of my job is to make sure of that. And just like, I think you were having the trust and confidence in having done due diligence, I would have to have, ask for that discretion on behalf of the board and my department heads, that that's what would be my concern to make sure that you get. So my recommendation as your administrator would be to, to do this. But what I was going to say is tonight, it would be to at least, you know, adopt it in principle. And then when you get the town council's final version, that you can look at that and then, you know, you would actually, you know, look to, to agree with them.
I'd like to give Mr. Pugellans.
Sure.
I already put, I gave him the paperwork.
What a pay that is, it's a substantial savings to us. If you go by what we have in the budget for that department, it's $21,000. And it looks like this is $25,000. Now, I know some of it we're going to have to continue to spend, the annual audit and things like that, but it looks like you would find something. There is a clause in there, Chief, an availability clause. Town accountant or his designee or others will be available to the town administrator with department heads during regular business hours via telephone or email. Town accountant or his designee will travel as needed to Millville Town Hall, pick up, drop off correspondence, et cetera. So it looks like there's something in there that we can work out.
So it's, it's in there?
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for, to communicate with somebody.
I understand.
If I can't, if I can't communicate with somebody.
That's why, that's why we're here talking, to make sure.
And another thing I'd ask to be, if it's not in here, find out what their standard operating practices to do quarterly reconciliations with each department head on your budget. So we don't get ourselves into this at the end of the fiscal year or trying to fix all these accounts that could have been fixed as the fiscal year went through. So that might be something we can see if they do that already, because a lot of places do, or added to it.
So let's, I would entertain a motion that in principle we'd rate as sound.
I make the motion for the Uxbridge Intermodal Agreement.
For accounting services. For accounting services.
For, for accounting purposes.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you. And I most definitely will be bending the ears of my department heads going forward to make sure that, that we answer those kind of concerns. And they will be here to be able to answer that as well. And I've been given those assurances. Okay, the last item on my agenda for, for new business is the warrant for the animal control officer. Before I came on board, that was one of the things I was told that we were going to need to do. And again, you can find it in your packet. It's something that has been posted by this community for a number of years. And I basically put it before you to make sure that the community was apprised that Gary Fagan would be appointed as the animal control officer for the town of Millville. And I don't know if there's any discussion that you'd want to have on that, but in order to do that, we'd have to sign that today. And then I would have the constable post it. And it would be given under your hands.
Yes.
Which we know is very important terminology for posting a warrant after the last two weeks.
Make motion to accept and sign the warrant for animal control officer.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll.
Aye.
Yes. Alrighty.
All right. With the exception of the signing of the warrants that you had started out earlier and had moved to the end of the meeting, we have the payroll and the standard warrants along with the, of the documents. Okay? And that would be it.
Okay. So let's, let's start with the warrants, payroll. Jennifer, do we have to sign this memorandum of understanding?
No, I, I was authorized to sign it. I didn't see, they, they sent it to me to sign, so I just wanted you to be aware that I had signed it. That was what had started, that was what was recently accepted by the state. It's the preliminary. I would imagine that the grant itself will have, when we do it, will have your signature.
Or my successor.
This isn't always signed.
Is that?
Did you just sign that?
Yeah.
Yes. These are just the, the bills.
Oh, they were, they were underneath.
So you don't draw these, you sign that.
So.
Unless you're.
Just where the stickies are. I know. I'm sorry. They must have been.
Sorry.
We'll get it someday.
Fine. It is fine.
I can start it. It's a big oak. Thank you. I thought so. Yeah, I need to. No, you don't sign those. Those are the bills.
Sign here. Mr. Jennifer, Mr. Bucket.
Yeah, those were all the, I think what happened, Jennifer, is it got separated. That was supposed to be on top of the, the other one. Sorry, I should have just.
I can still submit my bill from June 30th, 29th, yes?
Yeah, just, you know.
Well, we have our, we haven't had a meeting, so the bill came in the last week of June.
Okay.
And we are meeting tomorrow night, so it will be in there tomorrow after 10:10.
Okay. Anything that doesn't come in, we can always encumber.
I just need it because it's part of the grant money.
I see what you're saying.
And I have to send all that information to.
I missed one, Jennifer.
The state.
Okay.
For our $10,000.
No, not on here, no.
So then it will take it out of our account.
I'll take a look and see.
But I'll put it in there Tuesday night, Friday.
Do you have the original animal control warrant?
Did I? Oh, it's underneath there. It was underneath the bottom of, I thought I sent.
You did, because I signed it.
He signed it, but.
Okay. Okay, hold on. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
This is.